This conference will now be recorded.
Soon as we get live, we'll begin. Ready to begin.
You may.
All right. Good morning. Call a meeting in order. Well, everyone, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome everyone again. Our first order of business was to swear in our new commissioner. That's already been done. Welcome, Commissioner Tisdale.
Thank you.
Second item is to approve the agenda. Is there any additions or corrections, Bruce?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So there was an executive session that was scheduled for 11:30 at the end of the meeting. That is no longer necessary. So that can be crossed off. And I would note that this morning, you received a letter from Cameron Larson regarding CUP 487. And it's captioned withdraw. I would like to formally withdraw CUP 487. Thank you, Cameron Larson. So you can add that to your agenda. I don't want to add that at nine o'clock when Amber comes down, but if you want to do that now.
Can we just get it out of the way right now?
You certainly can.
Okay. Will be in a motion to accept this.
I'm overly accepting the, uh, withdraw.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to withdraw the CUP 487. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, and so that's at the request of the applicant, right?
Right.
And so that also would negate the dust control plan and the driver safety plan that you approved prior. It would also involve a mutual rescission of the Hall Road Agreement as well. And so, and I would note that they can apply again. If they do apply, they're going to have to go through the entire process again to include the application fee and all of that. And so I note all that.
Okay, well, plus I see to it in the discussion, you'll save the taxpayers $30,000, which I like that part of it. No reasons were given, so all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Do we have any conflicts on the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda is amended.
Oh, that would be a good idea. Two second. Idea interesting thing. All right. The motion in a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, now, do we have any conflict? Seeing you're hearing none, we'll go on. Give you for approval of our regular minutes of our October 24th meeting. Most approve the best meeting minutes. We will see all day.
Second.
Okay, motion in a second. Approval of the minutes, all those.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Bills. What's your pleasure on the bills? Do we have any questions?
My question was answered.
I don't have any. I'm not.
Big enough?
Nope. Make a motion to accept the bill.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the bill. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Do we have any travel requests, Brenda?
I have no questions.
Personnel.
Have a few. Start out with the auditor's office. I have a separates being presented today for Krista L. Schroeder. She was hired on May 22nd of 2023, going to County Employee 1, grade 3, base pay of $20.49. And will be effective on 11/19/2020. May, and she's doing a great job.
Mission plan. Budget item?
Yes.
Most approve. Mark it. We have a motion in a second for approval of the separates. All those in favor of the motion will say aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Yeah, I have a new hire, the Information Systems and Technology Department. Also Director DS is here if you have any questions for him. It is for Kyle Anderson. It is a Information Systems and Technology Specialist, grade 1, base pay of $26.97. He will be a full-time permanent employee effective 11/27/23.
I move to approve the hiring of Kyle Anderson. Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
We have. He is a replacement. He is filling a position for an employee who is. Over there. So he's just filling up. Yep, yep. I have two cell phone per DMs, one for Brett McNeil, who is a full-time patrol deputy, so be effective on 9/24/23. And then Colin Simpson is also a full-time patrol deputy and is be effective on 10/24/23, and the amount is $104 per month.
Motion together, move.
Yes.
Okay, we have a second.
Second.
Motion in a second for approval of the cell phone seconds. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I'm going to have a new hire. This will be for our dispatcher 1. It's for Robert R. Witherspoon II. Dispatch 1, grade 1, base pay of $21.23. This will be a full-time permanent employee effective on 11/14/23.
Move to approve. Okay, I'll second it. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Julian F. Flakeman, dispatcher. Be classified as a dispatcher 2, grade 1, base pay of $22.33. This employee will be a part-time filling employee effective on 11/14/23.
What's your call? Maybe the fine employees still live there.
They live in Mead. They live in Sturgis, yes. To Sturgis.
I'll move to approve the hiring. Do they have Blake? Okay, second. Okay, we have a motion in a second for the new hire of Julian Flakeman. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
We have a new hire, Stephanie Brooks. This is a correctional case manager, grade 2, base pay of $33.75. This employee will be a full-time permanent employee effective on 12/11/2023.
Okay, Chief Deputy, can you explain this position to us a little bit?
I think that's what Brian talked about a while ago. There'll be numerous jobs that this manager will do 24/7. The managing of the inmates. Stephanie has quite the background in counseling. She has a degree in counseling with a minor in criminal justice. She's worked for BMS as a case manager and a counselor for about three plus years. She's currently working at State as a correction, or CSO. Managing help with specialty courts like DUI court and other courts. I think there she's managing 16 plus clients, so.
Okay, thank you. What's your pleasure?
Most approve.
So that, motion in a second. Further discussion, Commissioner Slate.
So that's why Sarge is around. Step 2?
Step 2 because of her his.
Thank you. Further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
And then the last thing I have is a letter from Paul. I think you all have it in your packet. It looks like this. If you just wanted to read it.
Sure.
Okay. Bruce, for the commission meeting on the 14th of November, I would like to place Ron Mueller as on as a volunteer for Lawrence County. He has volunteered to be the point of dispersing POD manager. We are updating a plan to set up a POD in case there is a need to dispense medications or give shots to the entire population. We are working with the South Dakota Department of Health, Black Hills State University, City of Spearfish, Spearfish High School, and many more, including Butte and Harbin Counties. Ron has volunteered to train, to coordinate the entire plan. Quite an undertaking, and he should be commended for stepping up. So we would need a motion to approve Ron as a volunteer for insurance purposes.
So moved.
We haven't done it before, for some year or so. Why does emergency have it in now?
I'm not sure.
We've got a motion. I'll second it for further discussion.
Maybe, I don't know, Bart, do you have anything to add?
The POD, we've been working with Brad Richardson quite a bit in the last few months to update the POD plan. And like I said, it's a point of dispersion, dispensing for if like the COVID vaccine outbreak or flu outbreak that. And it's quite an undertaking, quite a big deal. We have to go through and revise the whole plan. They, they, they really want to get a POD manager in there as a paid spot, but we're unable to do that. So Mr. Mueller has stepped up to volunteer to help with that. So.
Thank you.
Okay, further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Ron.
We're even able to.
Okay. Down to the Honors Accountant with the Treasury. Ms. Brenda, you're on again.
This is as of October 31st, 2023. Total amount of deposits in the bank is $63,588,741.86. Included in that total are the $5 million in colliers. The five are the bank balance of $35,636,863.70. US Bank Balance, which is our Public Safety and Services Center Fund, $21,315,960.79. Money market, $1,636,917.37. Total amount of actual cash is $1,350. Total amount of drafts and treasures possession not exceeding three days is $1,129,587.75. This whole amount of cash. $2,423.98 petty cash, $2,725 for a total of $64,742,828.59.
Yeah. Move away. I approve of the Honors Accountant with the Treasury. Better. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Let's see, abatement in this.
Yep, you have that executive order first.
Okay, executive order certification for EOP agreements.
Kind of a housekeeping matter, Mr. Chairman. We'd be looking for authorization now at Chairman's side.
So moved. Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval for the discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Right as you.
Now the abatement with his.
Right as you.
Hey, Brett.
All right. This house actually burned down in July of '21. So we did not catch that it was burned down. Didn't have any. Sometimes we get a building permit saying structure destroyed, you know, and then we go get it, but we never did. So gentleman paid his taxes and then went, I think I'm paying too much, and came in and was, oh, so we were just debating back his building.
Motion to approve the abatement. Okay, motion in a second for approval of the abatement. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Brett. We're down to reassignment of committee duties.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, previously former Commissioner Diver served on the National Resources Committee, Black Hills Forest Multiple Use Coalition as the alternate and the revolving loan fund. I should add that later on in your meeting, the timber committee will be here, and they're going to request, I think, that Randy continues to be a member of the National Resources Committee. But otherwise, I don't know, if Rick wanted to assume all those duties or if you wanted to reaport them in the same fashion.
I will. Okay.
I make a motion to appoint Rick Tisdale to the National Resources Committee, Black Hills Forest Multiple Use Coalition, Altimate, and Lawrence County revolving loan fund to replace Public Commissioner Diver.
Yeah, we have a motion in a second. The Commission's ready.
I would like to be involved with that committee also. Which one? The National Resources. I think that's important with the forest plan coming up. It's important that we have somebody on there that has experience with the Forest Service and planning process.
Okay.
Do you want to stay on that? Wonder if you want to let Eric have the Commissioner's spot on there?
I'm supposed to be on there too. I took Bob's place.
Yeah, yeah, we're just reaffirming the spots that Commissioner Diver had been on. So I'll amend my motion to put him on the Black Hills Forest Multiple Use Coalition, Altimate, and Lawrence County revolving loan fund. And to retain his position. I'll make that motion and I'll make the motion tomorrow.
Okay, you have a second on that motion?
I want to amend your second.
Yeah, we have a motion in a second. Everybody understand. Okay, that's all right.
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Make the motion to put Eric Jennings on as the Commissioner on the National Resources Committee and to appoint Senator Diver to the National Resources Board.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, if I may. Randy has also been helping out planning and zoning with the subdivision ordinance updates. We would like to continue to do that. And so I think the members here as well, we would also add him, continue in that capacity. And then also, as a Commissioner, he was serving on the Public Safety and Service Committee for the surplus property discussion that you had, and also regarding the access easements and so forth. We would like to continue in those roles as well.
What's your pleasure?
I've got a motion on the floor.
Yeah. Yeah, let's take care of your motion first.
Need a second?
I'll second it. Is there further discussion on Brendan, on Commissioner Plankton's motion? Everybody understand this motion.
We could hear it again. I appreciate it.
I would move to appoint Eric Jennings to the National Resource Committee as the Commissioner representative and Senator Diver as a citizen member of the National Resources.
All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now you're asking.
Right, right. And there are a couple of other things to consider as well. I think, do you want to appoint a county commissioner now to replace Randy on the subdivision committee?
I would volunteer for that if that's appropriate.
If you have, we're about, we're almost ready to go forward. We're just finishing up the roads, road and water section. Just trying to kind of clean that up a little bit. That's where we're at with it. So we're, we're over halfway through the process. We've been working on it all this year.
Okay, Commissioner Tisdale will volunteer. Do we need a?
And Randy Diver?
I don't think so.
No?
Just right.
Okay.
Randy was going to.
He's.
He's.
Would you make that motion?
This is a move. Okay, we have a motion. A motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, one more. Presently, Chairman, you and Commissioner Sleep are Transportation Study Group. There was an introductory meeting last Thursday. But now Rick was also on as a member of planning and zoning, but he's a county commissioner now. So we have three county commissioners. And so I don't, if we have three commissioners show up at meetings, we're going to have to do an agenda, do a notice form. So would you consider only having two commissioners that could possibly show up at those meetings?
I would, I would relinquish my position so that the other could continue.
So who will it be?
Rick and Richard. Thank you.
Do we need a motion for that as well?
Yes, please.
So moved. Okay. A motion in a second. Everyone understand? Is there a discussion?
Is there another meeting set up?
There's no, nothing scheduled at this point.
I think they were looking at January, but they're going to send a, they'll send an email kind of thing out asking when works. So kind of watch your, watch your email.
It was good opening, didn't it?
Yeah, they did a good job.
Okay, everyone, everyone in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Did that clean it up, Bruce?
I think so, yep.
So did we do anything at the Public Safety on the land? Is that a formal committee or does it?
Well, I don't know. You were both appointed, you and Randy, so it's just you now.
Okay, we're good.
Unless somebody else wants to step up.
You need somebody else along with you?
I can do it.
All right, buddy. I think we're down to permission to close the offices on December 12th from 12:00 p.m. to 1:30 p.m. for the county Christmas party.
What we do is do that.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second for the discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Chairman, can I add one thing? Before I forget. So Rick, now you are on the Multiple Use Coalition packet of having a meeting on Thursday of this week, I think. They did their notice and set the holiday, and usually these to be on Fridays. Now apparently they're on Thursday.
And as alternate, you go to every meeting?
You, you can. I just didn't know if you wanted to go and see what that was like. Richard's on it as well.
Yeah. Take it, Bob's place.
And I'm actually there.
If you don't want.
No, might as well learn.
So anyway, thank you.
All right. Next item is to schedule a special meeting to canvass the results of the special election referendum. CUP 484 that's going to take place December 19th, and then the date that we would have to gather to canvass the results would be December 21st, 23.
Yes.
You have motion on that?
I'm overly accepting the dates.
Okay, I'll second it. Is there any further discussion? Is that at eight o'clock in the morning or?
Yes.
Right. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Would we want to have any discussion on the election process?
Yes.
Would like that?
Um, I just wanted to make you all aware that I do not have any authority for this expenditure for 2023. It was not a budgeted election, so I do not have the funds to pay for this election. So I'm going to need to either do a supplement or possibly a contingency transfer to place the funds in the election budget to fund this election. So you can do either or. So there's about, we used $8,900 of it for the, when we paid that fee to South Dakota Association of County Officials for that forest to Naco.
How much is left in our?
So.
Forty-two.
Forty-two thousand.
So you're estimating around thirty-four.
Yeah, yeah. I went back and just did an estimate just of the general election, which would be pretty high, you know, in 2022, or $27,047.22. So if you did a contingency transfer of $30,000, that would cover it all. And like I said, whatever wasn't spent would still go back into the general fund, just like it would if you left it in a contingency fund.
Yeah, so we've been levied.
I move to move that in a second. Okay, we have a motion in a second for the discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Only update on our group health insurance budget.
This is just kind of an FYI, FYI information. As we know, we went to the county paying 100% of the single policy. And we are in the process of open enrollment right now as we speak, and we have had some people that weren't budgeted come onto the single plan. So I just want to make you aware of that. So, you know, as the department heads, we'll keep an eye on our budgets. If by chance gets to be tight towards the end of 2024, because of that, just want you to be aware of it, that there might, you know, if there would be have to have a possible supplement to take care of that. Just basically letting you know in advance if it would happen.
Last item is close out of the courthouse and bail. Brenda, you got it?
Yep, I am going to handle that too. So I spoke with Bruce Henshaw at the Department of Legislative Audit in reference to this fund. We were using this fund to house the money for the ROF project, and we got the insurance fund. And then also pay for the masonry part of it that was not part of the insurance. And so as of today, there is $755,025.41 in this fund. We, it has been since 2011, taxes payable in 2012, since we levied for this in this fund. And so it's recommended that we close out the fund. There are, there's different types of options that I was kind of thinking of, just kind of maybe doing a supplement to give me budget authority, because there's nothing budgeted in there. And then using it to, I can use it, I can make, do a journal entry expenditure and put it into the bond redemption. And then that would be less general fund money that we would have to use that we've assigned for that, that would maybe carry us a little bit longer. Or we could do a supplement and do, make, help pay for part of the RCS construction bill in December. So there's just a couple of options that you could use. I just, I wanted to bring that to you and then just close that fund out since it's not a fund we use to levy for anymore. If we did decide to levy for it, you'd have to opt out and, and for that purpose. It just, now would be the time since that project has finally come to an end and get rid of it. And if all possible, I would like to do it by the end of 2023 because it's one less fund then.
What do you suggest?
It's like, it's totally up to you guys. You know, bond redemption would be great. You could, I could. But I do have to do a public hearing for a supplement because, you know, and there is some interest that is being earned on it in this month. So I have to get that calculated so I could bring that forth on, at the probably December 13th meeting, just so I make sure that I get all of the interest and then I'll stop putting interest in that fund and it will be dispersed in the other funds.
Let's board.
Question, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
Our contingency fund for the building process, our project was, has been being utilized. We're, we're probably ahead of schedule on expenditures out of that. Is it possible to save some of this money back to build that fund back up?
Yes, Commissioner Jennings, if you did use that to pay for, for instance, RCS bill, that would take, that, that money normally comes out of the US Bank account, which it would not. That $755,000 or $800,000 probably once I get that interest from November put in there. And then that would give you more money for a contingency. That is correct.
To be very helpful.
That would be, it would be very helpful.
Very, very good.
Yeah, so you know, those soft costs that are starting to come in now would not be such a stressful.
Is that a motion?
It was. It is now.
Let's see.
Do you want me to formally verbalize that?
No, I got it.
Okay.
You have a second. I'll second. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you all very much, all.
All right.
Stop talking for a while.
Chief Deputy, you're in the barrel, buddy. You got any room for us? Light's good over there? All right, we'll kick you loose, buddy. Unless you guys, any of the other commissioners have any questions for the sheriff or? Seeing none, you may go, sir. Thank you.
Thanks.
Looks like we're back on schedule. That's for a day.
We have a public hearing.
Oh, we do have one. I'm sorry. Okay, this is the time and the place for a public hearing for liquor license renewals. Okay, this is the time and the place for a public hearing for liquor license renewals. So we'll let uh Brenda get started on this and then after she gets done, we will uh open it up to the public for any discussion for or against. If we, if you would like to speak, please stand up and state your name and address for the record and uh we'll listen. Brenda?
Yeah, this is the time and the place for the annual renewal of all of our liquor licenses in the county, they include the off sale licenses, the um retail and Sunday on sale licenses and also the on off sale wine licenses. And to check with the sheriff, or crystal check with the sheriff's office and maybe not see any problems um with any of these and left in our system and, you know, felonies have, arrests have been reported for these. So at this point, um if the public has no comment, I recommend approval of all these licenses.
Okay, as we stated, it is a public hearing, is anyone in the body of the audience here this morning that would like to speak for or against this? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Leave it up to the board for their discretion.
Yeah, I had one question, um Cascade Plaza for Spirit School District. If I could uh get to a platform and.
Which, which one?
School district or the end of uh what, uh liquor license?
Well, that's just their legal description.
Yeah, that's their address?
Yep. Yeah, it's just their, their.
So it's on school property?
No, I, I think that Cascade Place or Spirit, I don't think that should say Spirit School District, so.
Oh, I don't.
Yeah.
Something's wrong there.
Yeah.
I think it's just a Cascade Plaza.
Plaza, yeah.
Cascade Plaza.
Yeah, I mean, look here. Give me just a second, I'll look at that.
School district.
Yeah.
They don't have it. Oh, it could be better, right?
Yeah, absolutely, yep.
Yeah. I'll, I'll look, I'll look at that legal description, but it, it is just a last string in. It's a last string restaurant, so, yeah, it's the renewal for that last string in. So I will make a note to check that on that legal description. Thank you for catching.
Motion approved.
Uh, second that. Assume that, that, that motion included the amending the Spirit School District out of the form. If, if that is indeed incorrect, then we will guess.
Okay, um, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye. Aye. Opposed? Carry. Yeah. Okay, now I think we're up to you. I don't know if you know, we got a Hall of Famer in the room.
Yeah. Congratulations on that.
Speedway Hall of Fame.
Um, I don't have too much, I have a uh, the snow removal agreement in Huntington County that I'd like to have chairman sign. This is a trade off of a couple of roads that we, we filed for Huntington County and they filed a couple of which are.
Your language is a must. We're all good with everything?
Yep, yep.
Okay, we need a motion for that, gentlemen.
Most want the chairman to sign.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second for allow the chairman to sign. Further discussion, seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Can I take that one?
What?
Can you sign that one?
The one that I had? Mine didn't have this place on.
Still at the floor, sir. Second on this is there. Uh, back to our Tintin Road, the further agreement that we, we talked about back in September the fifth, we did some, you know, we reviewed the uh, the agreement, uh, we do have a member from the Forest Service here, if you have any questions. We started the process of the further agreement and we're down to the portion where we would need to, to do the uh, do the surveying and stuff and I did contact Bros and I got an estimate, you can see there it's thirty-two thousand dollars for the uh, for the boundary survey, the centerline survey and then to do the, the uh flat preparation. So if we're gonna continue on this, on the Tintin Road project, I guess this would be the next step.
The, yes, for Tuesday, this is uh, uh, we've been in discussion and working on this for several months now too. The county would end up taking over the road from the cattle guard at the sanctuary up around the corner to the, above the Aspen Hills turnoff.
Correct. Probably four miles.
A lady from the Forest Service.
Yeah.
If you have any updates or any comments or?
No, we're just kind of hanging out, waiting for you guys to make the final decision with the application and get going on.
The uh.
Analysis and all that.
And these funds, from what I understand, won't be available till twenty twenty-five, correct? To, if we go through the whole process.
That project that you put in with Brandon.
Yes.
Yeah.
That was up for the grant of four hundred and seventy-one thousand nine hundred dollars to do the project. So, uh, but the, the county is gonna bear the cost of the uh, of the survey work. And, and after, you know, speaking with Bros and setting this up or tentatively setting it up, it uh, it wouldn't, that wouldn't be done until next year for twenty-four. They don't feel they will have time yet this winter to do it, they could start it this winter, but.
But the Forest Service still needs a, uh, a motion from this board to continue on. Mr. Jennings?
So, now, Mr. Chairman, if I'm understanding this correctly, uh, we've been doing a pretty good job of destroying the fence or keeping our feet on both sides and not fully committing to this role, uh, to taking over control of this role. But this step then, uh, put us on one side of the fence and, and fully commit us to, to taking responsibility?
I believe so.
Mr. Chairman, John, you're looking for permission to, to make the application, is that right? And, and the survey?
Application and to uh go forward with the survey portion.
That's required as part of the application.
I guess I'm concerned about that, I think Forest Service is keeping too much control on that and wanting to get a project to buy a little, exercise more, more to it than we want them to.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I have similar concerns, uh, particularly I am number six on this agreement. It, it would seem that, that, to, to me, if, if you're going to give up responsibility, you also need to give up control. And I'm not sure that the Forest Service is really giving up control, uh, if, if we need to uh clear everything with the Forest Service engineers, if that's the way I'm understanding it, is that correct?
Are you reverting, like, if you wanted to do minor reconstruction or are you talking about like tree removal?
Uh, so any of that, and, and I also have concerns about the whole D E P A part of it too, wanted to make sure that there's no cost to the county on that. Uh, so, yeah, I'm concerned about the legal work that would need to be done, I'm concerned about uh the county uh wanting to ban or take out some trees that are shading some corners uh and having to clear that with the Forest Service and get permission from the Forest Service. Uh, anytime you do any kind of uh disturb, ground disturbance uh on Forest Service grounds, we would get permission. So I'm, I'm not wanting to have to, to have the county approach the Forest Service every time we try to do any maintenance on that or uh just in the, in the typical process of, of road maintenance. I, I want the county to be able to go and, and just take care of that if they're taking on control of road maintenance.
And this would not be a deed of need cement, so that the land still does stay with the Forest.
So every time the county wanted to do something, it would have to, the Forest Service?
Well, so there's still some allowance for minor reconstruction, um, and that would fall under ifverda. Now, if you were talking major realignment of some sort down the road, that may have to be reanalyzed.
So what if uh fixing a drainage issue?
That's just.
Is that a minor or is that?
This wouldn't be any different than, I believe Galena, Galena Road is under ifverda. Um, so it's really not handled any different than how you handle it.
Other Maitland Road has a ifverda on it too, I think, we've got one to do reconstruction of a corner.
Yeah.
Commissioner Tessa, uh, I'd like to ask Mr. Bay, is, do you see a problem in this?
No, I don't. I don't, I don't see where we're gonna be doing any kind of major reconstruction of this road. I think everything as far as the road, the alignment of the road and the drainage and everything is gonna stay relatively the same. This will be nothing more than a, than a reshaping and regraveling of this road.
Has there been any issue with Galena or, or whatever other roads you have heard as on?
No, there has not.
Mr. Sleep. Uh, and when you do that, it's gonna speed up traffic there because it's gonna be a better surface there and and the young people use the road. Uh, I see, I see more accidents happening, so.
I mean, that could be, I, I respect your, your opinion, I, I, I'd rather take my chances on a smooth, better maintained road myself. I respect your opinion.
Road, alright.
Haven't seen, haven't driven this, may I speak? Haven't driven that road for a couple times every day in October with my wife hunting. Uh, they don't slow down for those speeds, but I'm seeing it, I mean, they, they, no, the washboard throws you right in the ditch anyway, so. I, yeah, I, I agree, it will increase speed, however, it'll be more controlled speed than on the washboard.
Commissioner Jennings, one other question, uh, I don't know that I really got the answer on the D E P A, does D E P A, D E P A, is the D E P A current on the rollback? Or do we need to, to have a D E P A support down?
There is a certain width, but I believe you guys were talking about a different right away width. So that would, we would need to know that under application, so we know what to analyze.
And that would be after the survey was done?
Yep, it would be during the survey.
During the survey. So is the Forest Service committed to doing the D E P A at no charge to the county?
Um, I, I believe District Ranger Steve was on, ordered that.
Okay, what's your opinion?
Mr. Bay, what is your recommendation?
Um, I'd like to get, go forward with it. I get called pretty much weekly on this road, I'd like to, to get it approved.
And, and that falls under professional services at thirty-two thousand, we can just do that without the bidding is under fifty for professional services for this kind of?
It is professional service, yep, so.
Any other comment, Bruce?
Yeah, so I, just to clarify, you're, you're asking for the authorization to have the chairman sign the application or would you sign the application that's submitted, John?
Uh, I think I would sign the application, I, I just, I would just like your approval to go forward and get, uh, I would get an agreement with Bros and I would bring that to you. I'll make that motion.
We got a motion, I'll second it for further discussion. Mr. Sleep, you got a?
Oh, I'm so concerned, I, I drive it every day and it's a terrible road. And it needs to be better, but I can, I can see the speed going up there and we haven't got a commitment on fixing some of those curves there. Or so this, so I guess I'd have to be against it.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think I'm also opposing this, uh, just, I'm, I'm not sure that the county wants to be taking on additional roads. That's, that's my concern, but, but I'm torn a little bit with the fact that we possibly have some grant money coming that, that helps. I don't want to walk away from that, but I'm not sure that I want to commit the county to making a road for, for eternity.
Okay, further discussion?
Bruce? John, this would include snow removal as well, correct?
Correct, we already do snow removal on it.
Yeah. Basically, the only change you'd see is a better road. And we did give them the go ahead here several months ago to apply for the grant, which went through, so um, due to the fact that we somewhat committed ourselves earlier, I'll, I'm gonna support this today. Uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, uh, will say aye and Brenda, let's go.
Flanagan?
Aye.
Tisdale?
Aye.
Sweet?
Aye.
Jen?
May.
Ewing?
Aye.
Motion carries three, two.
Okay.
Okay. Um, got a few other things here, before we do that, I'm asking for approval to purchase a, a mulching head for our skid steer. It's a, in that, it's the expense of thirty-nine thousand three hundred and twenty dollars. It, it's an item that's an attachment to uh minimize our brushing, right now we're hauling all of our brush to either landfills or we're hauling it to a spirit fish yard and burning it. This is, this let us mulch it on site. This was something that we were gonna purchase later in the next year or two, but the way things are lining up right now, I have a, I got a, I got some problems at the end of the year, I, our mower doesn't look like we're gonna get that this year, we're gonna have to pay for that next year. So I'm just trying to move some things around, I'm asking for the flexibility to kind of realign some of our purchases.
Well, it sounds like this would save a lot of transportation.
This would be a very, this would pay for itself and I think it's just a matter of a few days.
Can you get a hold of one right now?
Yes, it's available right now, I've already checked.
We need a motion to that effect or just verbal?
It's under the bid limit too, so, I mean, but it is available.
I might mention, in the past, I just burned it on site.
We're not allowed to do that anymore, the Forest Service won't, won't let us burn on site, so we have to, we have to haul. We've been doing that for probably five years now, we've been hauling everything, but they let you mulch it though? Yeah, we can mulch it on site, we just can't burn it on site.
I'd like a motion to approve that expenditure. I'll second it. Okay, we have a motion in a second for the discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Are we uh down to the, of the, the bail portion of this?
Public hearing? Yep, on the broad resolution.
Let's get the public hearing out of the way first.
Mr. Chairman, this is the time and the place set for a public hearing as required by the D O T uh in reference to the mutual resolutions between the county and the city swapping, swapping roads, we have a copy of the resolution. I have to have the city spirit, which has already acted on this, because either this last Monday or the Monday before confirmed that with Nick Royals, their road person. Looking for others, they can have the chairman sign. I think John has looked at it as well and it looks, been in accordance with the discussions that have taken place over time.
Yes.
This is probably like, what, five years in the making?
Really? Uh, Mr. Chairman, this, so everything is the same as the ones that we agreed on this, right? Is that correct?
Yes, as, as, as far as, there, there have been a number of i- iterations over time, I think the most recent thing was the extension of the St. Andrew Road, right?
Uh, that and the uh Hill Street.
Hill Street, right.
The annexation part of Hill Street that they're gonna take on a slightly longer distance.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, this is a public hearing, is there anyone in the body of the audience that wants to speak for or against this? Uh, and if you do, please stand up, state your name and address for the record. Anyone? Seeing none?
I agree.
No.
You have a comment, Amber?
No, I agree.
Say your name. Alright. We'll close the public hearing and offer to the board.
We've been working on this for some time.
Yeah.
Um, it's.
Good to get you all over.
Mr. Chairman, hopefully, um, I think the parties have agreed that this is the start of ongoing discussions, I think the goal after this now is probably to develop some criteria um by which roads will automatically transfer to the city, right, uh, instead of arguing about it like we have?
Yeah, well, your, your motion will uh have reflection on having uh John Bay or how we should present it, assign this document. That's how it's written here.
Okay, yeah. I'm not gonna. You got the wrong one.
Well, we must have.
That's, that's, that's the notice, that's the notice.
Alright.
Yep.
So it'll be me?
Yep.
Alright.
It's right here.
Okay, so I moved off, right, Chairman, uh, you can sign the resolution twenty, twenty-three dash twenty-five. Okay? Did you, uh, who said?
I thought I signed it.
Yeah. You seconded it, Richard?
Yeah.
Alright. We have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Alright, now we down to the bail one?
Yeah, and Mr. Chairman, I know that, I think Roger's telling us and is appearing via Gota meeting. Uh, he previously had provided some, some statutes regarding section lines and I think the ones he provided are highlighted in yellow. I also provided chapter thirty-one twenty-five, I provided, I think, all of the statutes just to get a greater context. But um, I think he was, he was here, wanted to address the section line off of, I think it's one hundred and ninety bits.
Can you hear us, Roger?
Jan, can you hear me?
We can't hear you.
Roger, can you hear us?
Yeah, can you hear me?
You're muted, I think.
Um, no, I'm not. I don't understand why here.
I don't know. I'm down, so he can hear us.
Yeah, Roger can hear us.
We think you've muted us, Roger, so we can't hear you.
But I'm not.
He's talking, so we can't hear him.
Let me try it again.
Can we hear anybody else?
No.
They can hear us, so. But can we hear anyone else? Roger?
I can hear Roger.
Can you, can you talk to us or there's Jackie?
We can't hear anybody.
Who was that that just said they could hear me?
It's me, but I'm not there. It's Jackie.
It is. Try now, Roger.
Can you hear me now?
Alright, uh, the bailers requested this this morning, so I'm going to allow Mr. Neese, who's representing the bailers, to come up and start the ball rolling on this and then we'll also hear from you, Roger, after that.
Mr. Chairman, if I may too, John May and I went out yesterday, provided a picture of, I think, of what the discussion is, this wire going across the roads. And so you have that and there was also kind of a vicinity map that Amber helped me put together, kind of orientate as well. You want this, Chairman?
Uh, I can stand or? Hi, Roger.
Good morning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You remember we were here January fifth, this year? Roger and I talked a little bit, things kind of settled down. So didn't really push it for further. I think while we're here today and I'll let Mona say more is we're kind of, issues flared up again related to the bailos are putting up anti-elect fence to keep their cattle from getting away. There's been some disputes as to what can or can't cross the road. In essence, is why we're here. And I think the bailos' concern goes back to where it was at the beginning. I, their, their position is that the road never to been open if there's access from the other direction, but I understand it has been open. And so I think looking at some guidance from the commission on what can or can't cross that road, I think that, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, Mona, I think the bailos are very much against cattle guard. I think if, I think if, if, if a gate is absolutely unnecessary, I think that's, that's a discussion point, but I don't think the, I think they're going to. Fair?
Fair? Because it's, it's a private road. It's not a, it's not a county road. It's on any private property too.
Mona, would you please stand up and state your name and address for the record, please? Okay, then go ahead and repeat what you said now.
Um, I said I.
I want you to come up.
It's not a, a public road, it's under private, private right-of-way. And you go through, I went through three properties to get when I was growing up and you open gates. You're going through a pasture. It's a section, it's over, and there was a previous access to this property that was the section line. It's that they had access for years going through our place. And that there was no reason to even open up this other.
Okay, alright, we've heard from you folks.
I did, uh, I had a map of where the previous one was and what they come down. Nobody even, nobody even asked us.
Can you share those with us, please?
Mr. Chairman, is it true here, there's a north-south section line that I think is where that gate is at and there's also an east-west section line that goes almost like right through the bailos property there, right?
That's what's been, that has been an access for sixty years.
Sorry, if you look at the, at the map that Rick's holding, there's, I don't know what color you had it, Mona, but you see there's the, the north-south one.
Is the blue, is the light blue.
Yeah, the light blue and then there's a bright red that's the east-west.
Already.
I think it's reflected on the map that Amber helped me with too. You can kind of see that baleo crop right on the corner there. It's got.
I've got.
So that's the section line?
Yes, and that's been the access for.
And this is section line as well?
Yes, and that's what they.
This is where the gates at?
No, it's down at the end of the field. They're right at the end of our, our property is in our blue.
Okay.
So we got a little.
And my understanding is that, and Mona, correct me if I'm wrong, the bailos don't have any problem with any use of the east-west one that comes up from south.
Yeah.
Because that's been used for years and taking this road. Their concern is the one coming in from the north across their pasture section on one ninety-fifth street. That's, that's right.
That one should never have been open because it was already an access to it. And we were not notified that this had happened. We was just out in pasture one day and they're like, oh, they're, they're improving this section line. Never said boo to us. And then I get this letter stating that we can't put a gate across there. I'm like, we gotta have a gate across our pasture.
And Mona, could you explain why, why cattle guard is so objectionable for you?
I don't want my cattle next to cattle. I've, I've had broken legs, the cattle.
And it encourages more public access.
And, yeah, and it's not a public road. There's no public anything back.
For some context for maybe new people and may don't remember, it was a couple of years ago that I think you allowed, Mr. Kesteloot, I think, and/or Mr. Anderson were allowed to approve. I thought it was the east-west section line, but it might have been the north-south one, but permission was granted. So I think that's what Mrs. Balo is referencing, right? She might have seen.
Yeah, and no one said boo to us about if they were you know, had permission to do that. I mean, it had been an access.
Uh.
I don't know why this one was even.
I'm going to allow Roger to, to speak on behalf of this, this type.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, um, couple of things. One, this, the, the permission by the county to improve this section line was given to Michael Anderson and Bruce Kesteloot in April of twenty-twenty-one, two and a half years ago. And they've gone in and they've improved that section line. And contrary to Ms. Balo's belief, this is a public highway by law. It was a public highway by law even before it was improved. But once it was improved, it takes on a higher level of, of protection, if you will, under the law. The ability of a landowner to stretch a fence across the section line, an unimproved section line, is allowed by statute under certain circumstances. But once the section line is improved, they can't just string up a fence across the section line because the public, not just Anderson and Kesteloot, but the public has a right to use that road. Now, we don't object to a cattle guard, but we do object to a gate or a fence in this case. And I believe Mr. Anderson's in the audience and he can testify or share with you his observations of other people using this road, notably people on a motorcycle, for instance, and to string a single wire across the road as the bailos have done creates an incredible public danger, frankly. And they should not be allowed to do that. And so with that, I guess I would turn it over to Mr. Anderson as he, if he's in the audience. The one other thing I want to emphasize is that where this fence, where this single-wire fence is stretched across the road, it's my understanding that bailos do not own the land adjacent to the section line in that location, which therein again is a problem under the current law. Adjacent landowners to the section line can petition the county for permission to fence across the public highway. That's not been done here. There's been no petition. There's been no hearing. None of the safeguards that the law provides for an improved section line have been followed by the bailos. They just took it upon themselves to stretch this wire across the fence, across the highway. So again, I would like to ask Mr. Anderson, if he's in the audience, to also offer his information.
Hey, Mr. Anderson, would you like to speak on behalf of this?
Thank you. Thank you, Roger. Thank you, Commissioner.
Your address too, sir?
One two five six four, one hundred and ninety-fourth street, White Wood, South Dakota. I've talked to, personally talked to both landowners on both sides of this wire. Jesse on the east side, he is totally against having a, a gate, a wire that joins the property. And on the other side, the, the east side is going to be Dave Wilson. He is a farmer there as well as a real estate agent. And he is, he knows the laws and he says this is illegal. Happening, that's what's going on there, I'll say as well. Another concern of mine is a wire going from the fence across the ditch, across the road, across the ditches possibly a snowmobile going through and hitting that wire. I did witness a, a individual on a dirt bike last, last year going through that area. The gate was open. He didn't see it, but anyway, it could potentially be a hazard for somebody going through of that nature, so. Yes, we are against having a gate. It's illegal. And we are in full agreement of having a cattle guard with Jesse on the east or the west and Dave Wilson on the east side.
Would you be opposed to a metal gate that you could easily open and shut?
But you cannot, it's, it's against law. You cannot.
Not if they petition for it.
Mr. Chairman, I think the statute that Roger was referring to is thirty-one, twenty-five, one. It's the first statute on the sheets that you have. That talks about a petition in a public hearing, I think.
Okay.
You don't have that.
Mr. Neese, do you have further comments you wanted to share?
Thank you. Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, part of my being here was for guidance. And if the, if the commission's request, I guess, is that we file a petition for, for the gate, that's what we'll do. That's, that's been, we've talked to Mr. Wilson and he's in full support of that.
Of a cattle gate that you can easily open and close?
Yes.
So, reason or?
Guy, if you'd like to speak, please stand up, state your name and address for the record.
Okay, Guy Balo, one nine fifty-seven, Whitewood Valley Road.
Thank you.
And reason it's a single wire now is we've been working with Dave. We're going to redo the whole fence between us and him and it was kind of a temporary solution that got put in years ago that was working. Got to get a new fence put in yet. It's, you know, he farm, he don't have no cattle there, so we just, it was easy for us to just keep that up for now. Wire fence there.
Alright.
Thank you.
So you don't have any kind of a petition pending before you today, but it sounds like Mr. Neese would plan on doing that. I would note, I think as Roger noted, that the statute does talk about the adjacent landowners on the map that you have that Amber helped me put together. The adjacent landowners are listed on there. I think the Balo property is going to be on the, is going to be, you're looking south in that picture, so it's going to be on the left-hand side. That's where their property begins, but from the, from one ninety-fifth street going in is, it's owned by, I think it's Prestige.
Balo Wilson and something investments.
Yeah. So.
Platinum, platinum investments.
That might be a logistical thing for Eric to work out as part of the petition, but I think that's, there's nothing you can do today until you have that petition in front of you.
That's, that's, that's correct. And our, our intent would be to file the petition in accordance with statute. I'm sure I'll be in touch with you, Bruce, to make sure that we bring it correctly. Uh, because again, I don't, an easily openable gate, I think the bailos would be content with, but you sort of, for cattle health reasons, they don't want.
Mr. Chairman? Eric, I don't know if you're prepared to answer this, but unless and until that petition is filed, is your client willing to unhook that gate for the time being?
Well, I think Roger's right. I, I know, but I think, I think Roger's right. I can't block a section line. That's, that's, that's. I mean, I just, I, so I, I, I don't like it and I know they don't like it either, but I, I don't believe they can keep it locked.
Mr. Chairman? If, if I might add, I don't bring the statute with me, but Roger is correct, obviously, that along every section line is a publicly dedicated sixty-six-foot right-of-way that probably existed at statehood or if not before. And so what that means is I could go out there today and drive my car up and down the road to my heart's content just the same as I could a street and spirit fish, if that makes sense, right? And so typically you don't have gates across roads where the public is at. There is a special circumstance that this procedure allows for that, but we haven't had that procedure yet.
Okay, well, from what I'm hearing from the, from the bailos is we currently have cattle in your pasture now? So how do you handle that? Do they find it on the fence?
And I would go to you, Mr. Chairman, if I may. I don't, Eric is familiar with it, but I'm looking at thirty-one, twenty-five, one point one. And I don't want to necessarily confirm that this is either improved or unimproved, but we assume that it is improved. It looks like it might be a class two misdemeanor to have that gate across the road as well. So I, I'm not making any threats or allegations, but I just point that statute out.
But again, I, I guess Bruce, the, the, you know, what, what the bailos' concern is, is that in the third sentence of that statute, it says, "At any point where a fence crosses such highway, landowners shall erect and maintain an unlocked gate, which may be easily opened or provide other suitable access to the highway." You know, there, there is other suitable access from the other direction.
If I may, and so, and I think maybe Roger would point this out as well, so I think that's in the, in the, for an unimproved road.
Understood, and I, again, I'm not, I'm not going to deny that Roger's correct. I, that's why we'll go through the, the procedure.
Okay, Roger, did you want to speak to this?
I'd just like to say, Mr. Chairman, that as Eric has pointed out, that statute that he's referring to, thirty-one dash twenty-five dash one point one only applies to unimproved section lines. This section line is clearly by all agreement improved. Therefore, the provisions of thirty-five, thirty-one dash twenty-five dash one point one do not apply. And I, I, again, go back to the preceding statute, which requires that a petition be submitted to the commission signed by adjoining or adjacent landowners, asking that they be allowed to place a fence across the, the section line. And at that point, the commission has to hold a public hearing and at that, following that hearing, the commission will decide what type of fence or cattle guard is appropriate under the circumstances. But until that happens, this gate, this wire across the highway exists illegally and should be removed. And that's our request to the commission. I, I would hope we don't have to go, turn this into the sheriff as, as the statute below, the, the one we're talking about, provides. We're not interested in prosecuting anybody, but something's got to get done to bring them into compliance.
Okay, yep, I agree. I think there's, I don't think there's anything you can do further to.
Well, yeah, obviously, it, it appears that the next step would be a petition to correct this issue. It sounds like at this point, you can't have the electric wire across the road.
No, I believe right, Mr. Chairman.
It's not, it's, there's, it's a gate. It's a light gate.
Right. Yeah, I understand what it is, I just. In light of the discussion and the laws and the way things are set up, I think this board's hands are tied to allow you to do anything else. Am I correct, Bruce?
Yes. So, you're, Mr. Chairman, I, you will file that, that a petition as soon as we can. I will coordinate with groups to again make sure it's, it's done correctly and we'll of course let Mr. Teton, you know, as, as well.
Okay.
And then we can get that public hearing.
Okay, anyone else on the board have any further points to discuss or questions or? They seen that, I guess this closes the matter for today. Thank you for coming.
Can I just say something?
Yeah.
It's in the public hearing. Good job on the trading with this city. That's, that's, I'm very happy with everybody. That's, that's, I'm very happy with everybody for that, because that's going to make my job easier.
Okay.
So, I appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Roger. You're welcome. Yes, thanks, Roger.
Thank you.
Amber, I think we're down to, did you have anything further to?
Uh, no. The bridges are open on St. Ange.
Wow.
And they did start to dismantle the bridge on the Whitewood Service Route. I neither remember, something like they have the bypass in and it's, the, the bypass is in on the Whitewood Service.
Oh, that's happened.
And it's being used now, yeah. And they already started to demo the bridge. They're getting going on that.
Going to wrap it, because they were doing something over there.
Yep.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys. Have a wonderful day.
First thing on there is a professional service agreement.
Yep.
Okay, there's agreement, Mr. Chairman, for Mr. Paisley. I think the amount is slightly more than it was in the past, fifteen dollars.
Twenty-five dollars more. Last year, we, it was the first year we had done anything like this, and it was seventy-five dollars per time. We asked him to review something. Now it's a hundred, which I was expecting, because usually there's drive time and other things that he has to go do. We only utilized him, I think we only spent under four hundred dollars to, to ask him to do some stuff. Mainly, I want this in place because Jeff, in our office, is having his other knee replaced November thirtieth, so he will be out again all of December and, you know, into January. And that's pretty much when we utilized him last year, is when there was situations that we needed him to go look at something, because Jeff wasn't able to. It worked pretty well. And then he did maybe two or three reviews of commercial building permits for us, because we don't do those. And it worked pretty well. He, he was very timely, got back, you know, within about three or four days of us actually reviewing plans. It worked with the landowners directly, and it worked really well. So we just want to continue that.
Chairman, this was a budgeted item, wasn't it, Amber?
Yep, it's under my professional services, if needed.
I move to authorize the chairman to sign the professional services agreement.
Okay, we have a motion in a second and further discussion. Seeing then, I'll also favor the motion. We'll say aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Okay, Amber, you can have the floor.
All right. Well, this first one is a preliminary and a final plat for Cheyenne Crossing Village tract or Everly Development, existing subdivision, been out there, I don't know, fifteen years or more. And they are combining two lots together. So the original lot, thirty-two, and then there was unplatted lot, thirty-three. Now it'll be thirty-three A. So they're just combining two lots into one.
Sugarloaf.
Sugarloaf Village, yeah.
All right, two different owners in the lot, so?
Nope. No, Everly Development Company owns both of them. They're just combining them, probably for sale.
Okay. Do you need the motion on the preliminary and the final? Good group. You did?
Yep.
On both? Okay, do you have a second? Second. Okay, we have motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll also favor the motion. We'll say aye. Aye, opposed? Carry. Well, see, mining company?
Yep. This one, there was a little bit of confusion, just so you know, some of the ownership information didn't get changed over. This was, I think Lack had talked, when they came in and did their, letting you know that they were transferring properties from Lack to Homestead Mining Company. This plat was kind of in the midst of all of that, but the transfer has now taken place. So the actual paper copy does show the owner being Homestead Mining Company. The one that you guys saw still had Lack on there, but we switched it. And what it is, is it's changing the lot lines between the Puerto Rico load and the Puerto Rico two. And it's because there was an old fence line on that bottom corner, so they're just following the fence line. So a little bit of that property is going to get transferred over to the twenty-one point nine seven P R two. And then it leaves eighteen point one three acres in P R one.
Okay, do you need to declare it exempt?
Um, this one is. Yes, fire plant exempt, yep.
Clear it up. It's a plot line revision.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, then motion in a second to declare it exempt. Also favor the motion. We'll say aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Motion to approve the preliminary and the final. Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the preliminary as well as the final. I'll also favor the motion. We'll say aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carried. A little tongue tied there.
And the next one is Nemo Mountain Cottages, Bruce Keller and Tracy Ramble. Um, this has been something we've been working on for a while. They're, they're trying to, they were going to change lot lines around. You guys saw one, then they changed them again. So we're here again. Um, we never did get the other plat recorded, luckily, so this is just, they're just redoing it again. They're gonna, you can see where there was a lot of little lot line changes. Just moving lots around, but they own all of them. In the end, they're going to be selling a couple of them. Or one of them, for sure. So it's just moving lot lines. It's an exempt plat. The easement did get extended, so there was an existing easement that comes from Nemo Road all the way back, and they just extended it. So it goes all the way to the new lot four one.
Okay, this is another one that we need to.
It's exempt, yep.
Also move a handy guard exempt. Okay. Sorry. We have a motion in a second to declare it exempt. I'll also favor the motion. We'll say aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Motion to approve the preliminary and the final. Sorry, okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the preliminary and the final. I'll also favor the motion. We'll say aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Hurry, you know.
Okay, so this one is a lot in Powderhouse Pass, Trailside Edition. They are in the process of doing a townhouse-type unit up there. What we've been doing with these is, once they know where the common wall is going to be between the structures, then they have to platter it so that that common wall separates the two structures for sale. So we have lot one A and one B that isn't allowed use in this P U V. So this way, we make sure, like, their, their structure meets all setbacks and all that one stuff.
Chairman? So the structure is built then?
The foundation, I believe the foundation's down on this one, isn't it, Mike? Yeah, so we did a foundation-only permit, so they could get it late and then, and then they know where the line's going to be in the middle.
Sort of has hydrants and stuff.
Yeah, hydrants, water's in, sewers in, everywhere. Roads, I think the road's asphalted even, isn't it, or not quite? Yeah, I think everything's done now. But this is, I guess, just for everybody to know, this is my expectation on these, when they're splitting these for townhouses, because I don't want to deal with, oh wait, the foundation doesn't sit where it's supposed to sit, so they can, they get a foundation-only permit on, they did it on lot one, poured the foundation for, for both sides, and then they could split it exactly where it needed to be for this. So we know, and then we have them do the plat. We know where the lot line is and that the foundation meets all setbacks.
Mr. Jennings, you look puzzled. So what happens if the, if the commission doesn't approve it and they have the foundation down?
They have the foundation. They're, they're doing it knowing.
That's in violation of setbacks, so we require them to take the foundation down. Is that correct?
Um, no, they would just have a foundation for one really big foundation. So it's a chance they're taking, and they knew that.
So they're accepting the risk.
Where they're accepting the risk that they want to move forward and they wanted to get the foundation poured before winter hit. And they said, well, you know that this is not approved. So if something happens, you have a really big foundation.
That's the only way they can do townhouses, yeah.
It, it, pretty much.
Motion to approve the preliminary and final. Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the preliminary and the final. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll also favor the motion. We'll say aye. Aye, opposed? Aye, motion carried. I don't know who's best.
So this one is pretty much the same thing. You can see structures, so it's the same thing I just explained. They're splitting it in half. You have your driveway easement coming in. They are providing an easement detail off of here, and then you've got your two things. This is going to be a shared driveway going into, where it'll kind of go into both garages. But your structures are on there, same thing, it's called setbacks foundation.
Motion to approve the preliminary and the final. Say it. We have a motion in a second to approve the preliminary and the final. Further discussion? Seeing none, I'll also favor the motion. We'll say aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carried.
This one is.
No.
No. Wilson.
Wilson and Haxton.
Okay. So this one is a lot line adjustment between two lots. It's the original, so eight and, no, nine and ten are being combined. And then there's lot line adjustment. You can kind of see this red line in here. They're kind of going triangle for triangle, and just moving it. And that's, you know, drain field and the lot line in the back, and then twelve, the structures are already there. The only thing that we saw a little bit, there is a tiny shed back here. It's right on the line. I usually don't do too much about a shed structure. It's close, but that's not usually much of a concern to me, being a shed. If it was a corner of the building, that'd be different, but it's right on the line.
What size is the shed?
I don't know.
Yeah, it's below two hundred.
I would say it's got to be close to two hundred square feet, maybe a little less. So it's just they have to show the structure on there.
And the fire plant's been completed?
Yes. Yep, this is existing.
What do you do? Go ahead, please. Okay, on the preliminary and the final, Richard?
Yes.
Okay. We have a second. I'm sorry. Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval of the preliminary and the final plat. I'll also favor the motion. We'll say aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carried.
All right, so this one, we kind of went back and forth on it. So what we decided to do with this one is the fire plant, so the original plat would be exempt as it's submitted today. And that is because they're trying to break off, W two is where the pump house sits. And so it's a utility lot, because it's water, the pump house sits there. So they're trying to get in on its own separate lot. And then W one is the remainder of it. It would stay altogether with your access, your gravel driveway access in there. And then what the Planning and Zoning Board had said is, they made a motion to approve the preliminary with the condition that the W two lot has no residential building restriction added to the plat, which we've done, so we have that. And then the notation in the minutes, that lot W one will be required to have a full fire plant if they come back for future subdivision. Because this, right now, it is owned by the lead-up sanitary district, but the intent is, is it'll probably get sold over.
Purchase has been, is in the works.
It's in the works, where Powderhouse Pass will be buying it.
Unlike small Powderhouse Pass.
Okay.
The, I think that's been completed. I'm not sure where the paperwork is getting it accounted.
Yeah. So my concern was, is it, because I knew Powderhouse Pass would be purchasing it. They have to basically bring this in to the full compliance if they decide to subdivide that tract based on.
C I D would not.
Yeah.
I think purchasing this is the C I D.
The C I D, Community Improvement District will.
Okay, so make the motion as exempt, or the current plating.
Plating regulations. And, and you could use, it does specify under exempt for utility. That's what, that's how they did the exempt. Just because it was a utility lot.
I'm sorry. Yeah, we have a motion in a second for exempt. I'll also favor the motion. We'll say aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Motion to approve the preliminary and the final.
And would you approve those with the same conditions that planning and zoning placed on them?
Yes, I will.
It's just the preliminary, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
There is no final with this one.
That's right.
Yes.
I would second it. Further discussion? Seeing none, I'll also favor the motion. We'll say aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carried.
Yep. It's a transfer of S P.
Okay.
Okay. So this one, I did put together a quick conditional use permit, sort of a staff report to explain this, because there was kind of a lot going on with it. So basically, this is an existing conditional use permit that Kelly and Jared Wilson currently have located out on Lookout Mountain Road and North Twenty-seventh Street. They built their residence out there and then built a large whole building structure that they were operating their business in since two thousand seventeen. And it was for, the C U P was for a commercial recreation facility. And they've been operating it as such, but currently, they have decided to close the Cropeek CrossFit business portion of it. And they would, they have come to, I guess, to ask you guys if you are comfortable with them. They would keep ownership of the, of everything, so they're not going to sell the property. They want to keep ownership because their house is there. But they'd like to be able to have a lease with Spirit Fish Martial Arts to move into that structure, which was, you know, the CrossFit place before, and be able to have Spirit Fish Martial Arts take on the conditions, run it very similar to what was being done before. The only condition, I believe, that they were asking for a change to, get in here, sorry. And it was in the letter from Jordan Thomas.
Number ten.
I think it was ten. It was just the hours of operation. So currently, I think it, they only went till seven thirty, does that sound right? So he would like to extend the hours of operation till eight thirty. And that was really about the only change. Other than that, I think you could pretty much bring them all the way across. Parking, there's, there's plenty of parking out there for, you know, it's kind of the come and go, people drop off, people leave. It's, it's pretty similar to how the CrossFit was. So that's what they're requesting is a change, but the C U P landowner would still stay as Wilson's. They just want to have a lease with them. So normally, we would just get a copy of the lease once they figure that out. And then do, you would just have to approve the transfer of the C U P. And then if you want to change that hour of operation, I would just need to know that.
Okay.
Anything else, Jordan? Is that, that's kind of the summary of what you were thinking?
One hour more operation. Yeah, we're trying to, oh, just a turnaround, like you said, for parking, sort of, if you just drop off.
Are you currently at X and eight?
That's me.
Oh. This'll be much better.
Thank you.
I think the only thing that might come up, they might have to work with.
City.
I don't know, when you guys did your access permit, was that the city off of Twenty-seventh, or, because if he's going to change that, you know, the way the access is, that'll have to be permitted.
The, the actual access to the property, I think, will stay the same. The turnaround will be inside.
Okay, so then it should be, you're not turning it back out again.
Cul-de-sac.
That should be okay.
There's your case. Did the road maintenance responsibility just change?
Yes. I.
So that's now city, is that right?
Well, that's what I'm thinking. It's to the county out there, isn't it?
This part is county, okay.
Yeah, I think you just took it back.
So, yes, we were very grateful for that, so it was considered, you know, it was very, very difficult to have that decision. So now it becomes, it's much.
And I think we were the ones that originally approved that access permit, I remember, right? Going into it originally, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the transfer to E four forty-one dash twenty-three to include an extra hour of operation under condition, was it a nine?
Yep.
Okay. I'll second it. There's any further discussion?
I just want, I'd like to bring up one thing with, with applicant. The conditions are that there are no more than 20 clients to be allowed in each class. I mean, your letter, you said that you hope that sometimes the classes could be larger, some, some larger.
So just to bring you, make sure that you're aware of that.
It's 20, it's just for average. I mean, sometimes it does go to 25, but it's not like, most of the time it's sometimes it's five, sometimes 20, but most of the time we're, we're not.
Yeah, but the, the condition is not written as average. The conditions shall, that 20 clients shall be allowed in each class. I didn't want to, to not put you into a violation.
Yeah, you can change it if you choose to.
Yeah, I think it's fine. I just wanted to make sure you understood. Okay, everyone understands the motion? All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
So we'll update this. It'll keep you as owner. That's how it has to be. We need a copy of the actual lease when you guys figure out that before you can take it over. And then this will go back to a yearly review. It was on and as needed, but it goes back to a yearly. So for, for a while. Okay? Give or take. We, our office will contact you depending on the commissioner's schedule. Yep.
Okay, the next item is a public hearing. It is 9:30 AM and we need to recess the county commissioners and convene a court of justice. So moving into that, he made the motion. You say a second? Okay, we have a motion in a second to recess the county commissioners and convene a court of justice. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes.
Included in your packet, the sheet looks like this. Laid out the criteria for, for a various request. Two strong requests there. So I'd ask you consider that or make a motion light of that, please.
Amber, you want to fill us in on a little bit of it before we open it up?
So we did put a staff report together for you. It does have some photos in here. So basically, Schmitz are looking for a variance request to put in a detached garage. And they need a 21-foot variance to the 25-foot side setback. The side neighbor is the Forest Service. I have not received an official, sometimes I get a letter from the Forest Service, but in this case, I have not. They did question it, but they're, it's not a zero setback. They're requesting like some of them. But I did not get an official. These are the photos that are in there. It kind of shows this is kind of a landing area when you come off of a highway, Nemo Road. No, Vanacra Canyon Road, sorry. Vanacra Canyon Road. When you come up Vanacra, it comes right down to the cabin and then this is the structure. Or this kind of driveway landing is there already. They just want to put a structure up. You can kind of see pictures, terrain. That's the existing asphalt driveway that comes in. So if you come off of Vanacra, you just go straight in. It's, that's the area that they'd like to put the garage. The cabin sits over here. It is located, so they own kind of Vanacra Canyon Road, Dalton Lake Road. They own that whole kind of valley in there. To give you a general idea, there's two separate parcels. And I'll go back to the map here. So it's kind of this whole, here's the corner. There's a cabin that sits right down in here. And then there's a separate parcel that sits back here. There's a house back here too. This whole area is open valley through here. They want to push the structure as far to this property line as they can. And with that, this is a, pretty much a drainage. I don't know if you've ever, it kind of comes off the upper hillside and just goes kind of down through that valley. So that's why they're applying for this, is to keep it out of the pasture and up in the trees. I guess really that's, that's kind of the gist of it. You have your variance considerations to follow. So we usually ask that if you make a motion one way or the other, it follows the variance. As normal, I don't usually approve variances. So my, my recommendation is denial. But in the end here, planning and zoning did motion to approve the variance to construct a garage based on the considerations and the ordinance and physical surroundings and topography at no detriment to the surrounding properties or dis, diminishment of property values. That was their motion. And you guys would both have meeting. Does that give a general consensus?
Yes. All right, it is a public hearing. We'll open it up for the public to, if you'd like to get up, stand up and speak for or against this, you may so at this time. If you do, please stand up, state your name and address for the record. Is there anyone that would like to speak for or against this? Seeing none, one more time, anyone care to? That's, we'll close the public hearing and offer back to the board. Mr. Schmitt, so you, you recommended denial?
I always do. I'll never recommend approval of a variance, but the planning and zoning board did recommend which they don't do very often.
They don't do very often, may I speak?
Yeah, absolutely. It makes.
They don't do very often, however, Bruce read some new guidelines for us that we had not heard or I had not remembered before. It loosens it up for us a little bit. It gives some common sense to just not just following the ordinance. And gave us some flexibility.
So you had enough flexibility to change your mind?
Finally, finally, yeah. We like going against her.
It's all right. It doesn't meet the ordinance either way you look at it, so.
So the hardship part is out now? Is that what I'm reading?
No, the hardship, they're still saying because of the top.
In 14 acres, I struggle to see a relatively flat piece of ground if you can't put a whole building on. Or something that's not 40 by 60. So that's, that's, I just, I don't see a variance in this anyway.
Um, it's not. It's two separate parcels, so.
Okay, so the larger of the two that equal 40 on a relatively flat piece of ground compared to a lot in that area.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I mean, you need, we need to find that a particular feature of the property makes for special conditions and/or some other extraordinary exceptional situation. I think I heard Amber say is it drainage? Is that, that would be the.
The drainage would be the only thing. Because I, I mean, I can't tell you that whole area drains down. The terrain is not flat. On the bottom it is, but that's not where this one's being requested.
Mr. Schmitt, a question for Amber. Is, is that metal then? Is that a wet metal in the spring? Or is it just the, the drainage area that the water runs down through there?
I would say that'd be a better question probably for Schmitz who are here, but I would say it is wet.
It's very wet.
Ma'am, could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Kathleen Schmidt, Nemo, South Dakota, 12645 Dalton Lake Road. When they condemned our property for eminent, or eminent domain, when they built Vanacra Canyon Road from Nemo to Sturgis and took part of our property, they did a main culvert that goes right into the west end of our property. And that whole meadow now is wet. In fact, it's green when it rains. It's impossible to put any kind of a structure here, there at all. So, because that's where, you know, all the drainage goes through. That was never there before until we redid Vanacra Canyon. So this sits up next to the cabin. It's the only place where we can possibly put it. Looked everywhere else, so.
Okay. Further discussion or action?
Just so I understand, there's a 21-foot variance would, would mean the edge of the building is four feet from the property line?
Correct. Yep. And what she's talking about is this is the center. It comes right through the drain. They have a structure here and a structure way up here. So it, there's no structures that are in that valley.
Right, and the garage was going up.
I think it's going up on this one, right? Yes, right up here.
And that's Forest Service.
Forest Service.
I believe we used Mr. Wayland's onsite.
Yeah.
For guidance. Mike went out and really looked things over, shared his findings with the rest of the board that day and that's what we come up with the conclusion.
You figure you can do it there, Mike?
Pardon?
You figure you can build something there without finding out?
Yeah.
If, yeah, on this side, it's, it's up this way. So if you look at these pictures up here, on top is where they're building. And right up through here is where all that drainage comes down.
Mr. Schmitt, how many structures are on this property?
You have two parcels.
Okay.
So it's 14.71 total. But there's two separate parcels. So right now, there's one house and then this proposed garage on the upper parcel and then the bottom parcel, but they're full ownership.
And what, there's the building here, there's a great big building here and that was like maybe the house. And all the other parcels go up here. And there's a house on that one.
This one here is one piece. There's a house and a garage. And then this one up here that they're building on is, is a different one. There's, you don't have a parcel layer on. That's showing everything that they own.
Yeah, there's a house here.
There's not a house down there that they own.
Okay, there's a house on this piece property right there.
Turn your parcel layer on. That's just showing everything they own.
Well, when I'm looking at the other one, it's divided right down here. Which again, doesn't have much to do with anything.
They, all the houses sit on their own structures. You don't have more than one house on one lot. Guess is what I'm trying to say.
I make a motion to approve the variance.
Is the, is the motion, does it include that there's a finding that apparently the dynamics are not being serious to the neighborhood or documented to the public interest of all fair? And that you find that a special condition exists, probably this drainage?
Following all guidance of the planning and zoning. Okay, I second the further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So, the three, two. Were you and I, Richard?
Yeah.
Yes.
It's a super majority, then that's.
Oh, really?
Yep. It's a board adjustment item. It does not pass, then?
Nope.
Well, I think you need to explain the issuance. So basically, because this is a county commission board of adjustment item, it has to pass at a four to two vote.
What?
Four to one, sorry, four to one. And it did not pass because it was a three to two vote. So at this point, the variance was not approved. So it means you can't build it in that location without moving it and needing the setback at this point.
Do we get the chance to talk?
At this point, the decision has been made. I guess I don't know. That's up to the commission.
Go ahead and stand up and state your name and address again for the record. And I want to hear what you have to say then.
Kathleen Schmidt, Nemo, South Dakota, 12645 Dalton Lake Road. We wouldn't even be asking for this. My husband and I moved here almost 15 years ago. And as our income, we had a cabin on this property that we rented as a vacation cabin. We're no longer doing that because our son has now, who's sitting next to me, our son has moved onto this property and lives in this cabin. And in order for his work, that's why we've requested this shop built next to the cabin. And without it being where we're requesting that it be, it's, it's, it's not going to work for us. We're not going to be able to, to have a shop for our son. And he is living here now because my husband and I need him to live with us because we're at the age where we need a son close by. So, you know, this is kind of a special circumstance. Hookgang and I aren't requesting this for ourselves for any, you know, to park Harleys in or anything like that because we're no longer renting it as a vacation. And I guess I don't understand, you know, if it's the Forest Service that, that you think would be objecting to this.
No, we, we haven't received anything from them yet. Usually, as Amber stated early in the meeting, they'll, they'll get ahold of us since they have an issue and they have it, correct?
Correct. Because Mike Wayland did come out. He spent quite a bit of time and he agreed with us that, you know, you can't really get an idea of what this property looks like unless you actually see it. Because the part where our house is in the cabin, we're up on kind of a, of a higher area and then it all goes down about 15, 20 feet under that whole rest of that. You know, I could come up and show it to you on the map. I mean, it's a, it's a big, it's a big deep incline, whatever it is, the word is. And there's just no other place to put it unless we take away the whole yard of where our cabin sits. You know, so.
Well, the only thing I can do at this time is, is ask the board if there's any members that would like to reconsider and, and we could vote on it again. Otherwise, it's pretty well done.
I don't see the hardship on the property. I have troubles not thinking there's other ways to mitigate this issue.
Okay. I guess there's, there's nothing further we can do, ma'am. They, the, the vote didn't pass by a super majority, so.
So we can't request that an onsite inspect, they come and look at it or anything like that?
You can request that.
We just don't have a place to put it.
Would you gentlemen be interested in onsite? I'll, I'll drive out there and look. I'd be happy to do that.
That would be great. That would be great.
All right, well, but as of today, it's been denied and, and until further down the road here, possibly we, maybe we can make a change or a rebuild or something like that.
I think at this point, they would have to reapply for the application. Public hearing, you made a decision. I think, you know, maybe it's something that you could change the size of the structure and come back for a different request. I don't know. I mean.
Well, that was the maximum. It's probably not going to be that.
Yeah, you can, that might change something if, if you can go not as much instead of, if there's a way to do that. But at this point, you would have to reapply to the county commission at least.
Okay.
So, sorry, but that's, that's why you have this process, I guess.
Next item? 9:45 and we're there. We have another public excuse.
Need a motion.
We need to reconvene this county commissioner. Post adjourners for the adjustment, adjustment. Okay, we have a motion in a second to reconvene this county commissioners and no longer on the board of adjustment. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And we. We are at 9:45. We have another public hearing. Amber, do you want to fill us in on what's going on?
Yeah, bring this up here.
As soon as Amber fills this in on this, we'll open it up to the public because it is a public hearing, but Amber will get us on board here on what we're talking about.
All right, so this is kind of an interesting situation. So in this scenario, the chapter of Calvary Cathedral, the Episcopal Diocese of South Dakota, and Mad About Adventures, Amy Peterson, have requested kind of a, I would say a combined effort. And there is that would be better if you could see it. There it is.
This is up on 85?
Yeah, this is Highway 85. So if you are are you good? This is the property here. Been owned by the church for years. There's a structure out there and there's cabins and commons area and all sorts of stuff that they utilized for different functions. And it's always, it's one of those things that it's sort of a grandfather use. They don't have an existing conditional use permit. They don't need one because it's been out there prior to zoning. Um, and this one is, at some time, they had allowed some snowmobile rentals out of that structure or off of that property. Um, I don't have anything showing that that was allowed. But the church contacted me because they had done a lease with Mad Mountain Adventures, thinking that they could do it because they were just leasing just the existing structures. Um, and they had done that while, in the meantime, Amy had contacted me and said, hey, just making sure, you know, everything's good with this. Um, and then that's what drew attention to me, saying, well, they don't have permission to run a snowmobile place out of there. The church then contacted me and said, is there anything that we could do at least this year to see how it goes? Because they don't really know what to expect. And then, um, if they could lease that out, allow Amy to run the operation out of there just for this season. And then maybe over the winter, they, if we wanted them to, they could apply for a conditional use permit, a warrant, but they don't want to, they don't want to mess up the, still rent that facility out, you know, to church groups and to different things. So they want to make sure that that stays intact.
Somebody has their mic on. If you could turn it off, thank you.
Um, so that's kind of what this is. It's, so they're asking for a temporary use permit to see how it goes this winter. Because they just don't know what to expect, I guess would be the gist of it. The temporary use permit process can be used, but it makes it really hard when we have a conditional use permit stating they should probably have a CUP for this adventure.
All right.
That's your call.
This is a public hearing. It will allow the public to, uh, stand up and speak for or against this. If you do, please stand up, state your name and address for the record. Go ahead.
My name's Amy Peterson. I'm living in Deadwood on State Road. I don't know what I was going to say. Um, we owned Mad Mountain Adventures for five years. Um, we bought it from my aunt and uncle. At the time that we purchased it from them, they leased out of recreational springs. We purchased it, we kind of took over the lease during the time of our lease with recreational springs. We, um, Brent and Terry bought it and took over and decided that they would rather run their own rentals than have us there. So we got, at the end of our lease, they decided not to renew it. Um, when riding the trails and stuff, you'd, um, go right past the church camp. It's a beautiful area between Trailshead and where we worked, recreational springs. The snow is better there. Um, everything about it was great. So whenever we heard that people had ran snowmobiles out of there before, I mean, like mega years ago, I don't know, mega, but twenty years ago, um, they did.
Twenty is not mega.
That they could do that, and they did great. Um, we thought we would try it because we looked at fine at our house. But the snow each year gets worse in that area. Um, so we thought we'd try it up there just to see at the time of signing the lease and all. I don't know if I, I went through two lawyers, and I don't know how nobody caught it. Um, but the reason for, now I remember what I was going to say. The reason for the temporary use versus the conditional use is that the season starts on December fifteenth. The way we make a living, pretty much make our money between Christmas and New Year's because everybody's out here. Um, so the conditional use permit, I believe Amber, that was maybe at January-ish.
Yeah, CUP process, it would have been the end of January before we could have gone through the whole process.
So it would be very difficult for us to pay that amount of money for the insurance needed. We're looking at like over seventy thousand to try to make just insurance up between January and when the trails close. I don't know. And that's all I think.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak for or against? Go ahead.
I'm Maggie Riley. I'm the, uh, new canon for property for the Diocese of South Dakota, and I think.
Your address, ma'am?
I'm sorry, um, ten thirty North Fifth Street, Spearfish.
Okay.
Um, and, uh, I think to Amy's point, we would have caught this much quicker, except that our old property, Canon for Property, uh, left in July, and I started, no, left in, at the end of May, and I started at the end of August. Um, and so we were kind of playing a little catch-up with this. This is a, a program, a plan that I think would be of great benefit both to the church and obviously to Mad Mountain. Um, the camp has run there for mega years, maybe.
That's mega. That one's mega.
And so it's mostly the summer camp, the Episcopal summer camp, uh, underheaded Episcopal camp that runs out of that space. Um, and then we have some groups that come in in the fall, but then we have a long period of time where there's no one in those buildings. And the, uh, wear and tear on the buildings when no one is in them is difficult for us as well. So I think there's a, a very positive effect for, for both of us, uh, both of these companies to keep our summer camp running. So.
And the church camp is pre-qualified in, because they've been there for a while.
Yes, yeah, it was prioritized only for anything I could see.
Is there anyone else in the body of the audience who wants to like to speak for or against this? Sir?
You have to find me. I'll go ahead.
Somebody has their mic on, would they please?
I have, I was going to speak. I'll turn my mic off until I do.
Okay, thank you. Well, as soon as this gentleman's done, we'll call upon you.
I was just going to piggyback on what Mike said. Does that mean? Oh, Mark Carbo, I'm in Juiceville Ranch Road in the county here. It was kind of a, a rank thought of mine and my wife's to help the diocese out. There's no winter presence in this place. For years, uh, we've gone back and, and at the end of the winter, and had the cleanup thing, we find doors wide open because they get blown up. And the place is, there's a lot of snow up there. And, uh, we just, uh, a winter presence up there would be good. We knew the people who rented the snowmobiles out of there years, twenty years ago. And, um, we just thought that would be a good idea to have somebody, not just living up there, but having a business there also. More for the diocese also, all right? Thank you. That's all I got to say.
All right, sir, uh, you're online. You, you have the floor. Please tell us who you are.
My name is Steve Bamford. I'm counsel for, uh, the Diocese of South Dakota. Uh, and, uh, I'll just, uh, obviously, we already put everyone else's stuff, uh, but underline, uh, what, how much financially this will help the camp, uh, which is primarily for youth, uh, uh, native and otherwise. And, uh, it's been around forever, a very long time. And as the person just, uh, who just spoke said, uh, it's, it's pretty much deserted in the wintertime. And, and, uh, the reason why, uh, part of the reason why this is an appropriate use, uh, is it is so close. It adjoins, uh, the permissible, uh, trails, so snowmobile trails. So, um, it's, it, it, there are lots of points of logic that fit together that suggest that, uh, uh, this be approved and that we have the temporary use and, and, and then obviously do our job, uh, if, if we go forward, uh, to making the proper application for a conditional use permit. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else online that would like to speak to this? Okay, seeing none, is there anyone else in the body of the audience that would like to speak for or against? Okay, at this time, we'll close the public hearing and off to the board. Commissioner Flanagan?
I don't see any kind of conditions or restrictions or, I actually don't see a temporary use permit.
This is the temporary use permit, that's all there is. There's nothing else for temporary use permit. You guys can choose to put conditions on the bottom. So the, the general condition is whatever you guys say in the minutes, and then if you want to add conditions, you can. But I didn't really have any conditions because normally it's.
Well, it should be all the basic conditions of conditional use permit, yeah, have.
We never have before, so that's up to you guys.
Okay, we've done commercial operation with this with, with no restrictions at all?
Um, the only other one would be that I can think of is when you guys originally started the maze out on the other side of Spearfish, and she had three conditions.
We required we had bathrooms. What was that?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That's, I think it was Port of Potties, and that's about it, when I looked back at that one. And then you had her go through a condition. She did like three years of temporary use, and then you had her get a CUP.
I think there were hours per day, and there were certain.
Not a lot, not from what I could find. But you can put whatever conditions you want on it, for sure.
Well, obviously, they must have, uh, restroom facilities on, on site. Operating hours, seven to seven. Go ahead.
I was just going to say, buildings sign up a lot better if they're used.
Oh, yes.
And so, it makes a big difference.
Yep. Commissioner Tissot? I would just, just add some conditions and take a look and see what everybody thinks after that, does that work? Hours of operation, seven to seven, as far as snowmobiles. Uh, downlighting.
I mean, if you want to, we could just pull your regular.
First aid on conditional use permits or all the.
Yeah, you could pull the regular CPs if you want to and just put those conditions on this. I think the only thing I would wonder is, do you want to see how this season goes? We could do a review like at the end of the season to see if you want her to go for a CUP over the,
Yeah.
the remaining season. I guess that's kind of the question.
Yes.
Does that work for you? And then I can just pull all your normal conditions. I think it'd be hours of operation, um, signage. Do you want to approve the specific sign?
Versus contact.
Yeah.
And one safety.
Okay. Do you want?
I think everything is probably out there, but just to have it spelled out so we know.
Like who you contact and whatnot, okay? I, because I can do that. I can pull the normal conditions that we pull across with hours of operation. Um, signage, you're having someone available.
I don't know if downlighting would, would, uh, be necessary because they're kind of out there in the middle of nowhere.
I think if they're going to put a sign up, that's what he's, right, I'm assuming. Because you don't want, you know, it out into the sky.
There's an existing sign for the church that's already there, and they would just disconnect that and put another one.
So hang it, because it's the same place. That would be fine.
And it's not, but.
I don't believe it is, but no.
Hey, due to the fact we are adding these conditions and they weren't aware of that, ma'am, in the back, did you have another comment? Yeah, sorry.
The only thing about the operating hours is that if someone gets lost out there or, you know, there's an accident, we make them stay there until the sled is back. That's just how it is. That's what the attorney has said. That's what the insurance said. So our rental hours are eight AM to four thirty, but there's many nights, not many nights, yeah, many nights that we're not out there by four thirty because we run a large fleet of snowmobiles. Um, so that would be my only thing that would kind of make me nervous about saying that I will have everybody out by seven is because if there is a sled out there that Gayfish and Park hasn't gotten to yet, Shannon hasn't sent someone out there, I don't know if I will be able to say, no, you need to leave because I, I need them to see the image and that type of thing.
So that isn't necessarily part of an operating hour though?
No. I'd say your operating hours would be eight to four thirty.
I'm sorry.
That, that sounds like, uh, more of an emergency than normal operating hours.
Okay.
So, do you trust my judgment to pull across the conditions that need me, or do you want me to go work on this and come back before the end of your meeting?
Well, in my opinion, if you just pull the basic ones across, I'm fine with that.
So gee, I just make sure you're comfortable with it.
Commissioner Flanagan?
I'm, I'm fine.
Carefully.
In case there would be some kind of point.
I'll trust it and have some.
Okay.
Okay.
I can do that. That's all I need to know. I will send you the conditions.
I move to approve the temporary use permit between, uh, the Episcopal Church and Mad Mountain Adventures.
Sorry. Yeah, the motion is second. Further discussion? Seeing none, I'll listen in favor of the motion, we'll say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
And your motion includes the conditions, right?
Correct.
I'll put the conditions together and then I'll send them to you so you know what they are. I'll send them to both the church and you. It'll give me probably tomorrow. Yes, thanks, Betsy.
Just one question, Amber. They rebuilt that church camp. I'm thinking it was after zoning.
I'm not going to speak for what happened in nineteen seventy-four. I don't know. I would say most of those.
Try to muddy the water.
Yeah, I would say the couple of church camps out there have been pretty consistent with being church camps. They may have changed some structures here and there, but the Episcopal church camp has always been a church camp.
It has. It just got moved to the other side of the road. And so my thought was when that moved.
No, it's, I, I believe it's been where it is currently.
No, the old buildings were across the road.
Okay, so you're going mega back then.
Thank you a lot. Yeah, okay. Yeah, thank you, folks. Our next item?
Thank you.
It is ten o'clock, and, uh, Keely, are you, is that you sitting there? Come on up and have a chair. You have the floor.
Um, I'm going to send this around. I'll explain kind of what it is so you know what you're signing. Um, this just helps us meet the grant for the document that I'm about to speak on, so. Um, so my name's Keely Snyder. I'm with the Black Hills Council's local governments. Um, for those of you who may not be familiar with the organization, um, we are one of six planning districts in the state of South Dakota, and we serve nine counties on the western side, um, including Lawrence County, so you are a member. Um, the reason I'm here today is to discuss, um, the update to the, uh, Lawrence County mitigation plan or pre-disaster mitigation plan. Um, about a year ago, Jennifer Seetsma from our office had come in to discuss, um, applying for a brick grant, um, through FEMA, um, which would fund the update of this plan. So FEMA takes a little bit of time, so it's been a year. Um, we were awarded that grant, um, in October. Um, and I'm working with the Office of Emergency Management on this. Um, so we are now in the process of getting that update. Um, so kind of what a mitigation plan is for those of you that aren't familiar, um, this is a FEMA-approved plan. It's required to be updated every five years. And the purpose of the plan is to look at, um, primarily natural hazards and what the county can do to mitigate those. So what can we do before they happen to lessen the impact of loss of life, injury, um, damage to structures, loss of structures, and infrastructure? Um, so not so much focus on response recovery, but more, um, what can we do before? One of the primary examples that's always used is, um, either not developing and restricting development in a foot. Um, so as part of this, um, the grant covers, um, seventy-five percent is grant covered. The remaining twenty-five percent can be with in-kind match. So anybody who listens to my spiel today um, counts towards meeting the twenty-five percent of that grant. So the sign-in sheet, um, is what we demonstrate to show that people were here, present, um, and uh, every person, I think it's twenty-seven and some odd change per hour per participant. Um, and again, that covers that remaining twenty-five percent. Um, so there's two things. Um, the first thing is, um, today I brought a contract. This is just between the county and Black Hills Council that says we'll work together to get this updated. Um, so you are aware of how the grant works. Um, seventy, the seventy-five percent, um, which is outlined in the agreement there, and I think it's nineteen five off the top of my head, um, is reimbursable. So, um, once we have the plan, um, good and ready to go, um, we will bill the county. The county will pay us, and then I'll turn around all the paperwork, give that to OEM. We will then reimburse you for that. And then, again, the twenty-five percent of in-kind covers the remainder of that. So every meeting that we host and anybody that participates, um, covers that. In addition to that, um, also, as part of this, it's a multi-jurisdictional plan. So it's the county's plan, but the cities will also be participating and eventually adopting the plan. Um, so I've been, uh, scheduling to go out and meeting with their city commissions. Um, we've met with a P C group, was that in October? I think that was in October. Um, and then I met with the city of Whitewood last week, um, just to get things going because I didn't realize all of your cities on the same day, on the same time, so. Um, with the exception of Central City, who I'm meeting with tonight, but, um, but yeah, so we're, I'm trying to get, you know, as many cities as I can, but I can't fortunately slip myself into to do that. So that's been a little bit of a process. Um, so that's the first thing is, is the contract. Um, and then the second thing is. And then the second thing is, we do form a planning team as part of this. The plan expires August of next year, so we would probably have gone through the process and have a draft, probably late spring, early summer, because it needs to be reviewed by OEM and FEMA for approval. So I would anticipate having a, like, an overall planning team meeting maybe two, three, four times throughout this process. And you don't have to, you know, designate anybody now if you don't want to, but just kind of keep in mind, and then I'll check back with you guys. I always highly encourage anybody who's maybe involved with planning to be involved, because a lot of mitigation starts with planning. And then I always encourage if there's any commission that would like to be involved in that as well.
Paul, did you have anything to add to this? Okay. So you need our signature on there to...
Yes, I would need your signature.
And we need a motion to have the chairman sign these agreements, so move. Second, is there further discussion?
Just one question, just another responsibility, the county was assuming responsibility for all advertising through the collections, setting the meeting that the county would need.
So I will work with EM, we try to find, you know, the best dates and time. I just need the county to assist with locations, and then if you've got advertising like Facebook or those types of things, or if you wanted to put an ad out in the newspaper, you would be responsible for that.
And so you're working through the emergency...
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Tizer?
I'm applying, I'm trying to say, thanks, and I don't remember whether to talk about this at the meeting. I see that it's gonna cost eighteen thousand dollars plus for a deal, and it's gonna be way more than what the county pays them.
So the actual grant total, just for clarification, is twenty-six thousand. The eight, the, I believe it's nineteen-five, is the grant coverage of the seventy-five percent. Yes. And this was, this would have been discussed, I don't know the exact date when Jennifer came in, but this would have been about a year ago, that this grant would have been, the grant would have been applied for December 1st last year, but we did have a representative come in and discuss that. So just because FEMA takes a year to review those, that's why it's been so...
Yeah, and she was here one time, I don't remember the discussion on that, but it's good to have.
Well, the total cost of the county would set seven thousand, the difference between twenty-six thousand and nineteen-five.
So the...
Or is that part of the twenty-five?
That's the twenty, that's what the twenty-five.
So there's a zero net cost to the county?
Exactly, yes. There would be, at one point you would have to pay, but then again, it would be reimbursed, yes.
Okay, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
I propose.
Aye.
Motion carried.
And then, may I add one more thing?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And then for the planning team, would you like me to just come back with that, do you want to discuss that further? Or just a representative?
Well, Amber's gonna be part of that, I'll be part of her bar. How many would you request?
One or two commissioners are what you're, I think we've done one in the past.
I'm happy with...
We've done this before.
Yes, yes, this is just an update, I'm happy with one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What the commissioner wants to decide on the decision, that'd be good. You're calling, isn't he?
I was just thinking about it. I didn't really say something about that.
I think I did.
That's a pretty easy one to do.
Probably so, at least it's reflected in the minutes. I nominate that we appoint Commissioner Ted Dale to be... Hazard mitigation.
Hazard mitigation, there we go.
I'll secure it.
David, motion second, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Mr. Tizer?
Paul, with this, will we have a meeting, or will you just do it like we've done in the past? Email it to me, tell me to review it. What, how are we doing this?
So, so I usually do, so we will have an actual planning team meeting. So I'll have a representative from each of the cities, and all the adopting members from each of the cities and the county. We'll get together, we'll discuss like the big items that everybody kind of has to agree on, and then I'll do like one-on-one meetings with the city and the county for more detail. So...
You'll direct you to...
Seeing that, it's been this with...
Anyone that's here in the room can sign it, and if you don't want to sign it, that's fine.
Yeah, but it saves us money.
It saves you money, yes, but it's all gonna be sponsored here.
We're gonna take the time.
Are you gonna sign it in the house? All right.
It's not from Mom.
We're back live again.
We're back on board. We're out of the closet.
Okay, do you have copies of the proposed memorandum of understanding language? Or the, that we're proposing? If not, I have.
No, I didn't.
Okay, I, I do have. Sorry, but I only have four copies here. Apologize, it should have been, had more.
I didn't know we were gonna talk about this. I can go make some.
That, that was my understanding of the main topic.
Well, so no, that. He's gonna make some other.
The, the topics were going to be, to appoint Randy as a principal cooperator and then update. Cooperating agency.
So this is the update on cooperating agency agreement. And our memorandum of understanding with Lawrence County expires February twenty fourth. Twenty twenty four. So we need to get moving on it because last time it was, when it was established, like a year. Negotiating back and forth. So this is proposed language I would like considered. What the essence of this language is, is to avoid surprises with, with the county, which we get a lot from the Forest Service. Maintain continuous involvement. And then, most importantly, is the last minute changes in projects with, with little involvement, or sometimes no involvement with the county. So this is what this language is trying to accomplish. No surprises, maintain involvement throughout the process, and then no last minute changes unless we work together on them. So all of this language is in Forest Service direction, in their regulations, in their guidance, in the National Association of Counties, Forest Service publications, so none of this is necessarily anything new. We do have a new forest supervisor, and this will be a good test to see where they're, where they're at. Because this just emphasizes all of that direction and regulation combined into one document and very, very much summarize. So in the past, we've had to constantly remind about some of the, some of the regulations and direction and policy of the Forest, of the Forest Service needs to be following. So that's what we're, that we're putting forward for approval or modifications with approval, anything of that nature. I don't know that this has to be voted on today, I guess I'd leave that up to you. You may wanna look it over and get at it later. The one.
Go ahead. Is this any changes from the last one?
Yes, it, it is changes. And one, one thing that has not changed is we pushed for forest wide. This covers the forest, we got a lot of pushback from Forest Services, a lot. I think we kind of won that battle by arguing that the, you know, the logs that are cut in Pennington County end up in the mill Spearfish. And the O H B use crosses districts, so I think we've won that battle. That has changed. This language is really not a departure from our existing M O U, but it spells out the direction and addresses a lot of the key problems that we keep having. So it's not really much of a change. I will say, one thing that has changed is this language requires the county or the resource committee to be involved with consultation with Fish and Wildlife Service on any projects that we're involved in. And that, that is something new. And I expect the Forest Service would probably push back on that. But what's going on with the long-eared bat is we're getting some Forest Service people saying, Fish and Wildlife says this. And then I call Fish and Wildlife Service and they say, well, no, I didn't say that exactly. I said, that's happened twice already in the last six months. So what that language says is that we wouldn't be involved in these consultation meetings with Fish and Wildlife Service. So I'm just throwing all this out there. Bill Colber has reviewed this and, and liked it. Randy Dibbert looked at it. And we've discussed a lot of this at various meetings. I have to say that the last field trip with Zeppelin just last week, I think we're making some progress. Forest Service. They're, they're feeling the pressure, but also calling them out on some of these last minute changes. You guys all heard about Chimera and how they suddenly took this last change. The Spruce Project, which doesn't really, well, it, it's an important project. They did the same thing. We, we didn't know anything about the last minute changes. The Zeppelin Project, which is ongoing, is, they're going in the right direction. They have a lot of good treatments, they're working on some flexibility, and they're allowing commercial harvest where it's appropriate. The trouble is, we get, we think we're going the right direction. There's a long dark period where we can't even get hold of anybody. We email, we call, and the next thing, you know, they're issuing a decision and they went that way or this way. So maybe this is overkill, but there's nothing in there that's not in the Forest Service Direction, Regulation, Policy, Guidance, except the Fish and Wildlife Service language, which is, which says that we want to be, be involved in that process.
Well, I think the added language is a definite plus. And I would see no reason we can't get this going and sign today.
It'd have to be incorporated into a final draft, correct Mitch?
Yes.
So the chairman could be authorized to sign when it's ready, or we could present it later on, what it is.
The rest of you okay? I, I like changes.
I guess I would like some time to read it over.
Okay.
It is, you're on a committee and they're all involved. Just two or three are, they are acting for the whole group. Well, everybody ought to be involved, you know, bringing us up back and talk about the organization. And that instead of just two or three of you doing the stuff and acting on it. Nobody else. That's it.
Well, yeah, absolutely, and I, you know, I don't, I'm fine with taking some time to review it. You know, we, we do have that February twenty fourth. We have, have some time. It's, it's just, it's draft. And, you know, we don't have any, as a resource committee, and according to bill, and everyone I've talked to, they're fine with modifications. But we gotta start, we gotta start, Siler.
Interesting if the board members wants some time when that's all over. Thank you.
Senator Dibbert, I think, is online too. I don't know if you have any comments.
Randy, did you wanna speak?
He had texted me saying he was available.
Is he already?
Yeah.
Is the microphone working?
We should be live. So maybe, apparently not.
Mr. Chairman, I do have one more pitch for the for Society of American Foresters meeting November twenty ninth. And it's at the Rushmore Hotel in Rapid. And they're gonna talk a lot about planning topics. Pine beetles, building a resilient forest, and some other forestry topics, but there will be a fair amount on plan as well. Both at the forest level planning and project level, so.
That's it.
All right, thank you.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I think so. Earlier you appointed Randy to be a member of the N R C, the Natural Resources Committee, but is there also a request to have him be a principal cooperator for the forest plan revision as well? That was discussed. Mitch, is that what you're proposing? For the group's proposal?
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, I, I put a proposal that Randy served as the. Serve in the capacity.
Can you hear me now, Bruce?
Just described.
And so what has, what, what does that entail? What, where's the principal cooperating contact?
So he would be with the, with forest plan revision. He would be the, the primary contact to work back and forth with communication with the forest supervisor, the kind of higher level planning, which he's been very effective at. And I think we wouldn't be where we were if we didn't have Randy pushing things along. And he's, I don't know that anybody else is as qualified as he is because he's been, he's got all those high-level contacts, especially with the regional office Denver and even up to the Washington office level. I think he's ideally suited as the main contact. And, and also would, you know, commence the time. And also the other proposal is just that since his commission expired, that he remain on the natural resource committee. So those are the two proposals.
Okay, Bruce, did you have something to add that I'll call on, Senator?
I, Randy can speak for himself. I was gonna say, as I understand it, Randy has built some pretty significant relationships with the Forest Service in both Denver and Washington. I think that Mitch will be too. Pretty employees.
Okay, Senator Dibbert, you on the floor?
Thank you, Commissioner Ewing. Yeah, I'd like to continue in the capacity basically that I have. Can't hear me?
There you go, you got quiet. You're feeding in and out a bit.
Okay, I'll get closer and I wasn't, I'm ill-equipped here. But I would like to continue in the capacity that I'm in because I have the momentum and we're also working from the legislative side with the, the state to be more engaged. So I'd like to remain in that position and, and continue to engage the regional forester and the chief's office and the USDA and Department of Interior. So that, I, I would be willing to do that if allowed.
Mr. Jennings. So I have a question for Senator Dibbert then. Are you speaking on behalf of the county or behalf of the natural resource committee? Or just as a state senator?
Well, that's a great question. In the legislative capacity, I'm, I'm speaking as a senator. For the natural resource committee, I would be speaking as a citizen of Lawrence County, vested with whatever power you give me as a commission.
Just one other, I'm, I'm just a little confused by the principal cooperator contact. Is that a, something that's recognized by the Forest Service through the cooperative agency status? Or is that a term that, that we, just we are using?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, if you look at the M O Us that we have, the M O Us has two contact people on it. I can't remember the exact terminology, but there's a primary and secondary. And Mr. Outka, in most cases, is the secondary. And, and I was the primary and currently am on the forest plan revision, I believe. Is that how you see it, Bruce?
I tried to verify that, but that's my recollection, yes. I couldn't find it in the minutes that you and I are at points of contact.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's in the document itself. I don't have it in front of me, but that's kind of the way it works. Commissioner Jennings.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks. Further discussion or? So I guess my issue with this, just to verbalize it, is that if we have somebody speaking on behalf of the county commission, I think it should be an elected or appointed official. I can certainly respect Senator Dibbert's commitment that he's had to this process, and I would hope that he would continue to be involved. But as far as a principal cooperator contact, I think it should be accounted for.
Am I allowed to speak at this point? As I could provide some perspective on the other counties, that the other counties don't necessarily have elected officials. So Mead County, for example, Kevin Forester is no longer with the county. There are other counties that have a memorandum of understanding for this forest plan revision, and some of them are not elected officials. That's just some perspective.
Anyone else on the board here have any? Mr. Schley?
While the elected officials are, are the in-between there somewhere, it ought to go through them and it's done. You see what I mean?
Sure. This, this is just the, the contact for communication and working through the forest planning.
Is there any decision being made by Mr. Dibbert if he has this position for the county?
Well, there's no real decision, formal decisions made. It's more of the coordination and working, networking with the Forest Service chain of command. The only decisions would not, it wouldn't really be decisions because they're planning, the planning process, whoever's appointed would be working through that planning process. But the actual decision that would be made is through coordination with the Forest Service. So anything like this M O U language would need the approval of the county. Is that correct, Bruce?
Say that one more time.
Well, anything that, this M O U is a good example where this was, was drafted and we're asking for permission from the county to utilize it or, or modify it and then utilize it. So it would be a similar position like that.
Okay, we'll go Bruce then.
Me.
Commissioner Flanagan and then Randy.
Is it, is it true, Randy and Mitch, that, and I see Randy has his hand up too, that, that any, any actions that, that Randy would take, for example, on behalf of the county would report it back to the Natural Resources Committee and/or ultimately to the county commission? And I think it's true that, that Randy, if he is assigned this position, wouldn't be signing any agreements or, or anything like that to bind the county. Is that fair?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
I think at some point in the past, it wasn't this particular board, but we've had Mr. Colber be appointed to contact several of our dealings with the Forest Service, especially the kind of forest plan revision stuff that we dealt with in the past.
Mr. Dibbert, or Senator Dibbert, excuse me.
Thank you for the compliment. Yeah, you know, if we look at the other models from the other counties, Custer's, Custer has their weed board rep or, or executive director as their representative. In Rapid City, they have their natural resource staff as their representative in this capacity. Mead County has changed a couple times. The two counties in Wyoming have, have a special person that they've put in this place. The idea is, this is just the messenger. So the messenger gets the information to the, your board. When there's a meeting, the commissioners will be notified so they can attend. And, and I look through this as a transition process that we, that we keep our momentum going and we have a commissioner engaged. And we just notify them at the information we have either to the commission or to however you want to do it, through the, through the natural resources committee and then to the commission. But it's just a messenger role. There's no signing, there's no official decision-making without an elected official having part of that.
Okay. It's a board's pleasure. I'm gonna get motion to appoint Randy Dibbert as the forest plan revision principal cooperator contact. See if we can put him on the board. I'll second. Okay, I have a motion to second, further discussion. I'll listen in favor of the motion, we'll say aye. All right.
Aye.
Proposed.
Aye.
Three, two?
Yeah.
Pass.
Okay, Bruce?
Chairman, should I add further consideration of the operating agency agreement, the modification there to, to your next agenda? So you have time to look at that? Or I don't, I don't know where that was left at. Are you authorizing Mitch to proceed as proposed?
I would like us to approve that at the next meeting. Okay.
I'll add it to the agenda for, I think, November twenty eighth. Mitch and I'll give you a time. Fair enough.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Thank you. All right. Next item, we're running a little late. Ten thirty A M is a public hearing. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-six. Vacation section line.
Okay. Before you is a vacation of a section line in the skyline subdivision. It's lot two. And it is, Wasserman's have purchased this property and are wishing to vacate from the thirty-three feet on Tetra Rock Road to the end of their property so they can start the building of their structures on this property. And very familiar with this property because it joins mine. So all property owners around them all have access through Tetra Rock Road. So the vacation would not hinder anybody's access to their property.
Mr. Chairman, is it, is it true, Brenda, that the section line adjacent across your property has previously been vacated and this would continue that vacation and there's no gap? They each went to the center line?
Wait here, my, my vacation, that's up thirty-three and there's continues to that side.
Okay, this is a public hearing. If there's anyone in the body of the audience that would like to speak for or against this, this is the time to ask you to stand and state your name and address. Do we have anyone that would like to speak? When you say no, we'll close the public hearing and off to the board. Mr. Flanagan.
I generally don't like vacating section lines, however, inside a subdivision where there's roads and the lots are smaller and you need to have that cleared up to build a structure. This one is pretty much exactly why I do approve when I'll make a motion approve this grant petition and vacate. That's part of the section line going to the lot here.
We have a motion to second. Further discussion? Seeing that, I'll listen in favor of the motion, we'll say aye. Aye. Opposed? Period. Mr. Gray.
Yes, sir.
You're on board, sir.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for making time for today. Don't like to take too much of it. I wanted to reach out and speak to you about a, a lot that we have budgeted for next year. That is a refresh of our county website. For those of you who are on the board, back in twenty eighteen, that's the last time we did a major revision of our website. And so it's, it's fairly typical within about a four or five-year cycle that website gets refreshed for two reasons. One, to improve the aesthetic of it. And two, changes in technology that allow additional functionality of the website. And that's where we're at right now. Budgeted for this for twenty twenty-four. But they're offering some incentives right now that will allow us to save about seven thousand dollars if we start the process now with the understanding that we will not expend the funds towards the project. So next year, yeah, that's where the, where the budget might. Like we did last time, we formed a project team, kind of an advisory team with representation from some various departments, particularly those who were, let's just call it, say, big users of the website, you know, had a lot of data that was changing on the site. And it would be my intention to, to, you know, enlist the support of some, some individuals, again, based on their desire to participate. Various department heads would like to have someone from their team be present on that too. And in addition to that, I wanted to put a survey out to all the departments, asking them, okay, you know, what things during this, what this last cycle, did you guys like about the website? Which didn't you like? So we can, you know, keep the things that are working well, but also make changes as needed. I know there are several things that would be appreciated. I know that I've had numerous discussions with, with Amber about, you know, because she's one of the ones that, that puts a lot of information on the website because of zoning is such a changing and evolving topic. And, and Bruce as well, you know, getting the agenda stuff put out there in a little more efficient way. And, and so we have the ability to make those changes. I think this would be a great time to come here. Okay, so I just wanted to ask if you had any questions, comments? To start off with, kind of go through the monetary aspects, that as well. I have one. Okay. So I had budgeted based on the, the quotes I got earlier in the year, eighteen thousand four hundred and seventy for, for the website refresh. If we act now, we can, that, that price would be about fifteen thousand seven hundred. So it's about seven thousand dollars savings. If we're, you know, just, just like every other organization out there, they, they, they're end of year sales. They're, they're aggressive on, on trying to give some incentives. So this works out well for us. In addition to this, we do see an increase in our annual maintenance in, in the, in the amount of about forty-eight hundred dollars. But over the span of four years, that pays for the next website refresh. That's, we get that included, so we don't have to actually have another larger expenditure at that time. And that gets us to about nine, just a little over nineteen thousand. The, the current website refresh would have cost us twenty-two if we would have done it. Paid the full amount. So, and that's today's dollars. So, you know, it, it ends up, I think it's gonna be a good move for us to be able to just have the website refresh included. The next time around, we don't have to have a larger expenditure at that time. Civic Plus is, is our website hosting company. They've been really good to work with. Their availability has been outstanding. We have had very, very few outages in five years of the site. They've also been active in keeping their site up to date from a security perspective, which I very much appreciate. They're the largest web provider for, for governmental entities in the US. So they're, they're very reputable. So I would recommend we stay with them.
And how long have they been around? How long have they been doing this providing?
They've been doing it for a long time. I, I don't remember the exact amount. The last time I remember was some, some over twenty years. I don't, don't quote me on that. If, if it's important, no, I will find that piece for you.
From the standpoint of the stability of the company, if writing into a long-term agreement, to make sure that they're still gonna be here in four years.
And, and, and that's a good question. I remember it being for quite some time, but just, just for the sake of argument, I'll get down. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Greg, are you gonna, are you proposing then to reduce that amount to a contract and authorize you, where the chairman, to sign that? Is that what?
That is correct. I do have a copy. I, I do have a copy of that contract that we have to. And yes, that would be requesting that I be allowed to sign or if so desired, the, the board chair. Thank you, Bruce.
Appreciate it. And the pricing was about three thousand dollars cheaper?
Seven thousand.
Seven thousand.
The, the regular price was twenty-two eight. And with this incentive, it takes it down fifteen seven. This just gives us opportunity to, to get started on the project. You know, twenty, twenty twenty-four is going to be a very busy year for it. We have a correctional facility to, to finish. We're also looking at some pumping system upgrades next year that's also budgeted for. So there's a little bit of luck to buy it off so we can, we can start getting some legwork done on our end with the administrative side. It helps us get a leg up.
Well, anytime we can save money, I think that's a. Brenda?
I just have a quick question, Greg. So this signing, of signing of this agreement, do we have to pay? I just have a quick question, Greg. So this signing, of signing of this agreement, do we have to pay for this prior to receiving the service?
No.
It'll be paid for in 2024. It's just signing the agreement now so we get this price break.
Correct. So that can add it on 2023 sales. Right. On April 2024.
I can't remember. Did you authorize somebody to sign that already? Okay, and then, and or did you want to ask the commission to appoint a committee again, or are you going to come back at a later date?
I'll come back again. And I don't know if we have to formally approve the committee or just be voluntary. It's up to the board how they want to do that. But if you intend to forward.
Did you formally assign them last time?
I think so. I think it was Amber and I and Shelley and Greg.
Myself and Stephen Carter.
Yeah. That seems to be a pretty good group.
Then we should just stay with our good group.
We of course will solicit input.
I agree.
I think that was a motion.
I can't make a motion. One of these other gentlemen will have to do so.
Yahoo. I'll move that we authorize the chairman, the chairman signing it or is that? Does the chairman decide the agreement to update the website and enter to make this agreement?
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Does that also include keeping the same group to stay on board?
I wasn't going to include that.
You wasn't, okay. All right, well, we'll, we'll deal with what's at hand. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Why were we in Kansas today?
Thought maybe we should check with the people that were. I'll get you a copy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. I'm glad you got authorized.
All right, Greg.
Hey, Greg.
Thank you.
Hey, Greg.
Yeah.
We are down to items from the public. I'll start out with, is there anyone online that would like to speak at this time for a public comment? I will remind you that you have a limit of three minutes. Do we have anyone?
Mr. Dale, I think you're the only member.
I don't see anyone jumping out. Anyone in the body of the audience?
Oh, thank you.
How about items from the board?
Commissioners. I have one, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I'm concerned about the process we have to follow to to appoint a commissioner following a vacancy. And it's, it's not, I have no issue with who we appointed. I'm just concerned about the process. I felt that that state statute is, is not how it should be done. I think that there should have been a public notice. I think that the public should have been notified of a vacancy and given the opportunity to express an interest in that. And I realized that that was the state statute that we were following, and the only way to change that process is to change the state statute. So I'm, I'm looking for some consensus from the commission to pursue getting that statute amended to where it would provide some public notice and stretch out that timeframe. In talking with other people in the area, apparently that statute, that statute itself would follow. Other commissions that have had a vacancy have had a much different process than what. And I'm not saying that we're wrong. You know, I think we looked at the statute and followed it to the best of our ability.
Did they have a better process then?
Well, they at least had some public notice and took applications or, and, you know, I think that we, by following the statute the way it's written, I think that leaves people out, leaves the public out that might have some interest and might also be good for mission.
Mr. Chairman. Bruce, I think the statute that Eric's referring to said that upon a vacancy, the county commission shall immediately appoint someone. So that's what happened is Randy submitted his resignation and they immediately appointed somebody.
Well, the resignation called for immediate resignation. So.
And so, yeah, there's no vacancy until he resigns. And so the process wasn't triggered until then. We didn't know.
I guess we can keep it in the back of our minds and think of it a while.
Yeah, so I guess my thought on my process, having worked through some associations, would be if this commission had a consensus that we wanted to pursue that, that I would then, one of us would contact the association of county commissions to see what their goal would be and see if they would want to lobby for a change in that statute.
Anything else? Comes before the board? Motion adjourned. Yep. We are adjourned. I'm going to shut the recording off.